All right, good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, May 20th, and this is a regular meeting of the Manatee County Board of County Commissioners. We've got hopefully an efficient agenda today, but we will start as we always do with the invocation and the pledge. Today's invocation will be led by Pastor Todd Papel from First Baptist Church in Palmetto, and our pledge will be led by Anthony Alford from Manatee County here. Works for our Veteran Services. He's received numerous awards and medals over his 20-year career, as well as multiple deployments throughout the world. So please rise if you're able.
Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity, and on behalf of Pastor Philip Hamm and First Baptist Church Palmetto, I'd say thank you. But let's pray, and we'll begin. Father and God, we love you, we thank you for another beautiful day here in Manatee County. Thank you for this opportunity to gather, and for these men and women who are in this room, who oversee the things that happen in this place that we call home. Father, we give you all the praise, all the blessings, for a place that we love so much, the beaches, the river, the inlands, the animals, the creation that you have created that we can live in. Father, for this meeting today, we thank you for the commissioners. We ask for wisdom over them as they hear, as they converse about the things going on in this place called Manatee County. We thank you for the first responders who are here today. Thank you for the place that we find protection and we call home. Father, may we be known for love, starting in our churches, and also in this place of work, of business, of schools. We ask for your protection over our children, over our families, over our friends and neighbors. Father, as we meet today, Father, would your wisdom go before this board, before this room? Would you be glorified in all that is said and done in this place? In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
County Minister, are there any updates to the agenda?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. All updates were published with the online agenda.
Thank you. And we're going to start off with two awards. Today, we have both a Team Member of the Month Award, which we do every month, and then a special 2025 Herman Goldner Award, which was given out last week, and we wanted to make sure that we more publicly acknowledge that award for our own Charlie Hunziker. But we'll start with the Team Member of the Month, who is presenting that.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Bob Bagnier. I'm the Utilities Business Operation Manager, and I supervise Danielle Brown in multiple roles over the past couple of years. She started her career about 10 years ago as a Customer Service Representative, working her way up to a Customer Service Representative Trainer, into where she currently serves as a Business Systems Analyst. In each role, she has done amazing work for the residents of Manatee County. Most recently, Danielle served last summer as the trainer for the Customer Service Team. The Utilities Department rolled out a very complicated customer information system. Realizing our residents were having a hard time enrolling in the system, Danielle volunteered us every Saturday to work at the library to ensure our residents received the best possible support. Fast forward about three months, and we were hit with three hurricanes. I think Danielle is a permanent fixture in the EOC, providing critical linkage between 3-1-1 and the Utilities Customer Support Team. Most recently, Danielle has been our lead for the Waterwise Manatee Program, which is a 30-month program where we have begun to install meters throughout Manatee County. Danielle has been absolutely amazing teammate, a pleasure to work with. She is truly the fire-and-forget kind of person. Whenever we ask her to do something, it's done to time and to standard. She is a future leader of our organization. I can't wait to see what wonderful things that she'll do in our future. Her direct supervisor, Anthony Sinopoli, has a few comments as well.
Thank you, Bob. Again, my name is Anthony Sinopoli. I'm the Business Systems Support Manager with Utilities Department. I echo everything that Bob has mentioned. I have the pleasure and privilege of managing a team of business analysts, of which I'm lucky to say Danielle's a member of now. When I say manage, I mean I barely have to manage her. She manages me half the time. Quite honestly, there were times when I was a member of this team before becoming a manager, and I would see her come around the corner to talk to me, and half the time, I would think, oh, no. Because there was always something wrong, but she brought solutions, she brought a smiling face, and whenever she came around the corner, there was a genuine issue. But she is truly a privilege to work with, and I look forward to working with her every single day. She's one of those people that, you probably remember these questions back in school, those choose-the-best-answer, multiple-choice questions. Many people are terrible at them, including myself, but she always seems to pick the right answer. She's the epitome of that question. She really does seem to find the best answer almost all of the time. I'm very, very happy to have her on my team, and I know I echo that sentiment, as well as all of my compatriots. At this point, I'd like to pass it along to Danielle.
I really don't have anything prepared. I just wanted to say thank you all, because I am truly honored. I know most of you have probably seen the video and the shock and surprise in my face when they came to tell me that I was Employee of the Month. It truly means a lot, so thank you all.
And thank you for everything you do. I know that the projects you're working on are sometimes a little publicly focused in terms of some comments. So it takes some, I mean, you're doing great work for a great cause, and this board fully supports the project you're working on. That's why we passed it and moved it forward. But I understand, you know, that we've got people dealing with getting bins out, and people trying to get water meters out, and sometimes you're unfortunately at the front line of things that are misunderstood at times, or just disagreed with at times for the public. So I appreciate everything you're doing to continue moving Manatee County forward and progressing, both in terms of technology and efficiency in the future. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And then, regarding item number 75, the 2025 Herman W. Goldner Award, and I believe, Ren, you're going to present this? Welcome to Manatee County's chambers. Thank you for having me.
Good morning, Commissioners. How are you?
Good.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Ren Kroll. I'm the Executive Director for the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council, and it is an honor to be here. We just, to tell you a little bit about the council, we are, we represent six counties. The size, our region is the size of Delaware or the country of Qatar. My staff likes to remind us about that, and we recently had our annual Regional Resiliency Summit here at the wonderful Marriott Palmetto, and I'm excited to say that we had such a grand time. We had over 350 attendees, that we will be coming back again next year. The resort staff was wonderful. We had our annual Future of the Region Awards, and during that, we recognized projects and programs from all across the six counties. And through the years, we've been in the regional planning, I mean, we've been, excuse me, the Future of the Region Awards is now 31 years old. The Regional Planning Council is 63 years old. And one of the awards that we give away is the Herman Goldner Award for Regional Leadership. And the reason I mention 1962 is this is named after the mayor of St. Petersburg, he was a gentleman by the name of Herman W. Goldner, and he was an attorney by trade. But what a visionary he was. He talked Clearwater and Tampa mayors into starting to think about this region, and how we cross, go across jurisdictional lines to do work together. And now, as we've grown, I started at the council in 1998. That's when I met Charlie the first time. I was a low man on the totem pole at the council, and we've kind of grown up together through the years. Charlie was a natural, natural fit for the Herman Goldner Award for Regional Leadership. One of the programmatic areas for the council is our natural resources and the environment. And he was chosen by the TBRPC, by the council. No one nominated him. His recognition comes from us, who realize what a regional thinker he is, and the work that he's done in this county, for the beautiful parks and preserves that you all have now, thanks to Charlie. And I would like to take a moment, and I'm going to reread what we said about Charlie. Today, we are honoring a gentleman who began his career with Manatee County in 1977, Mr. Charlie Hunziker, Manatee County Director of Natural Resources. Since 1977, he has been involved with a wide variety of environmental issues, ranging from conserving lands to beach renourishment. He oversees five county, Manatee County divisions, which touch the lives of every citizen in Manatee County. Those include, but are not limited to, y'all get comfortable, beach restoration, planning, permitting, and construction supervision to create native Florida habitats on county-owned preserve lands is just one of the responsibilities of the Ecological and Marine Services Division. In addition to land restoration, this division also maintains 957 channel markers, aids navigation on county waterways, plans and directs improvements to Manatee County's eight boat ramps, and 15 deep waters offshore and inshore artificial reefs. Charlie oversees public outreach and education programs in the preserves, and the Volunteer Education Division with over 30 programs monthly. Manatee County citizens are offered educational programs and materials on commercial agriculture, horticulture, livestock, marine resources, water conservation, and family services are also offered by the Agriculture and Extension Division. And Charlie is charged with working with the Property Management Department in implementing the 2021 voter-approved environmental lands referendum, offering $50 million for acquisition and/or easement acquisition of environmentally sensitive lands. In addition, Mr. Hunziker directs the Beach Renourishment Program for Anna Maria Island's nine miles of sandy beach, which also earned an award in our natural resources and the environment. And he serves as Commission Liaison, as you all know, for all things environmental. This is very well deserved, Charlie, and we congratulate you once again.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Well, this, yeah, this recognition really comes as I lean on the shoulders of everyone behind me and everyone in this department, and more importantly, this Board of County Commissioners. You know, I'm just thinking about this a little bit, having a little bit more time to think about this award, but it really boils down to the regional effect that we have. You know, we're partners with seven other counties, Hernando, Citrus, Pasco, Pinellas, Hillsborough, over 3 million people, larger than many population in many states. You know what? We're joined by one common body of water, Tampa Bay. And everyone standing behind me, and everyone in our past and to our future, works to the health of that bay, to the health of the Manti River watershed, because we're partners with everyone else. And if you think regionally, let's go beyond that and think globally. So I appreciate that. And thank you for this recognition, Ren, and to this board for supporting not only myself during this operation, but more importantly, supporting the natural resources, sports and leisure, parks and recreation, all those other departments in our past and our present that work for the citizens of Manatee County, and I'm proud to be part of it. Thank you so much.
Charlie, it's well deserved. You're not faking that same level of surprise this time, so we're not really replicating. It was, Ren, it was a great conference, and welcome to Manatee County. Thank you for hosting it here. I enjoyed both days of it and meeting a lot of the people there and hearing a lot of information. But then we had the dinner, and I've been there before, because I spoke on one of the Affordable Housing Panels a couple of years ago about resiliency. But I didn't know this was a surprise award. I almost said something to Charlie before he got, because he was wearing a suit. Everyone else is in polo shirts and jeans, and he's sitting there in a suit. Like, oh, were you in a suit to get, to receive your award? Fortunately, I did not, because the look on his face when you announced who the award winner was, was priceless, and I'll never forget the surprise, which I don't know why you're so surprised. I mean, you deserve way more awards than you've ever actually received for the work you've done here. So thank you, Charlie, for everything you've done. And Ren, thank you and the Regional Planning Council for coming here to Manatee County and continuing to assist us through everything us and all of our residents are going through. So thank you both, actually.
Thank you.
As always occurs, after 39 years of marriage, and 44 years in this county, the one who has the most patience to let me do the things I do, I just want to acknowledge my wife, Susan.
Thank you very much, Charlie. All right. Next, next we have a presentation, but I've got a room full of very important EMS people here, so I'm actually going to jump ahead to proclamations, because I think they'll be probably quicker than the presentation, and I want to get our EMS back out on the road and saving everyone and protecting everyone. So we've got four proclamations, because I was not going to take Memorial Day proclamation off. I need a motion to approve the proclamations.
Second.
I got a motion by Commissioner McCann, second by Commissioner Ballard. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Commissioner Felt, how do you vote? I don't think she's really on.
Did you hear me?
No. I hear you now. Say yes or no. Do you approve proclamation? Do you like Memorial Day?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It is approved unanimously 6-2-0, with Commissioner Sadiq absent. So first one, number three, Emergency Medical Services Week, which will be presented by Commissioner McCann.
This is a proclamation of the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida. Whereas Manatee County Emergency Medical Services EMS is a vital public service for the residents and visitors of Manatee County, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas Manatee County Emergency Medical Services fills healthcare gaps by providing important out-of-care hospital, out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine and innovative mobile integrated health programs that address the unique needs of our county's residents, and whereas Manatee County's Emergency Medical Services System consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, prehospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers, and whereas Manatee County Emergency Medical Services has demonstrated excellence in patient care and operational practices by achieving prestigious accreditations from the Commission on Accreditation of Ambulance Services, CAAS, and the Commission on Accreditation of Medical Transport Systems, CAMTS, reflecting their commitment to highest industry standards, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of Manatee County's Emergency Medical Services Provider by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that May 18th to 24th, 2025, shall be known, designated, and set aside as Emergency Medical Services Week in Manatee County, Florida, adopted with a quorum present and voting this 20th day of May 2025, signed by our chairperson, George Cruz.
You can tell which one you're going to speak. You're all important up in the front. Yeah, I'm just going to say something real quick. James Crutchfield, Deputy Director of Public Safety, and then I'll introduce the EMS chief. Well, I'm proud to celebrate the incredible dedication of our team, the EMS professionals across the county, from EMTs, paramedics, to our support teams, to make sure that the system works as intended. They do amazing work, and I just want to say thank you to each of you for supporting us and supporting our mission. I'm going to introduce Sean Dwyer, the EMS chief.
Good morning, Commissioners. County Administrator, County Attorney, I'm Sean Dwyer, the EMS chief for Manatee County. Thank you for allowing us to bring this forward. It means a lot to us, and I'm humbled to stand in front of a small portion of the almost 200 folks that work and provide EMS care in our community. This year's theme is "We Care for Everyone," and I think that perfectly reflects the work that, and the spirit that these folks do. One of the longest service-serving public safety organizations in Manatee County is Manatee County EMS, and our paramedics and EMTs, community health workers are vital to providing that care to our community. During every call for help, our team has remained focused on delivering quality, exceptional care with commitment that's demonstrated in powerful ways. Our community health program became the second in the nation to achieve their accreditation, and that's a testament to the high standards that we hold throughout our organization. Innovation and progress have also extended to our operations, and that's thanks to you all supporting our traffic management team and us getting our light preemption project going. We've also this year implemented blood products into our ambulances or our first response supervisor vehicles, purchased new ventilators, new IV pumps, aimed at really helping our patients the best that we can. We are thankful for this board's commitment to us, and we cannot thank you enough and allow us to celebrate EMS Week with you all. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you all. You guys are critically important in Manatee County. It was great being at the Public Safety Awards a few weeks ago and seeing a lot of you, talking to a lot of you, and seeing your families. What you do day in and day out, sometimes 24, 48 hours at a time, is incredible, and we couldn't function and provide the safety we need for our citizens without all of you. So thank you all very much for everything you do in Manatee County. All right, moving on to the next proclamation by Commissioner Beard. This is the Memorial Day Proclamation.
Thank you, everybody, today. I have the distinct pleasure to give the Memorial Day Proclamation. This is a day that, you know, we remember those who lay down their life so that we can have the freedoms. And I could tell you that my brothers, my Marines, that did lay down their life, and all those that laid down their life that I know of and those that I don't, would want us, and would want us to enjoy Memorial Day, would want us to spend this day with our families, remembering that the ultimate sacrifice, there's a cost to that, and then that we could enjoy freedom in this great country, the United States of America. So whereas we pay tribute to the fallen heroes who died in service to our country with a heaviness of heart and sense of immense esteem, we, the sacrifices of our servicemen, and women, parents, children, loved ones, comrades in arms, friends, and all those, known and unknown, and whereas our indebtedness to those who served in battle exceeds any measure of reverence, we can conceive, and whereas we, the living, must carry the weight so that the selfless sacrifice of those who fought to protect our way of life will be remembered and honored, and whereas the veterans of Manatee County reaffirm that dedication to democratic ideals by accepting it as sincere responsibility of our survival so that loss once endured will never be forgotten, and whereas on May 26th in Manatee County And whereas, on May 26th in Manatee County, as well as a, throughout our nation, ceremonies will be held to celebrate all military service members who paid the ultimate sacrifice so that we might remain free. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that May 26th, 2025, shall be known, designated, and set aside as Memorial Day in Manatee County, Florida, adopted with a quorum present and voting this 20th day of May 2025, signed by our chairman, George Cruz.
Commissioner, County Administrator, County Attorney, my name is Kelly Lynn. I'm with Manatee County Veterans Services. I'm here on behalf of Renee Medina, who is unfortunately out dealing with some major medical issues. I'm honored to accept this proclamation on behalf of the office and to let you know about some Memorial Day events. The office is so very pleased that the unveiling of the Manatee County Gold Star Families Memorial is finally here. This is an opportunity to honor those and those families who've paid the ultimate sacrifice for our freedom and it has been an honor to research and be a part of helping to tell their stories. That event will be Friday, May 23rd, at 9:30 a.m., right here in this chambers. At 10 a.m., May 24th, there's going to be a Memorial Day ceremony at the Sarasota National Cemetery. They will host a tribute honoring the men and women who made the ultimate sacrifice. At 8 a.m., the flags will be planted. There will be a service at Patriot Plaza at 10 a.m. and flags will be retired on 8 a.m. May 31st. They are looking for volunteers for both flag planting and flag retirement. Also on May 24th, SRQ Vets is hosting the 10th Annual Memorial Day 5K Hike to honor the fallen heroes who made the ultimate sacrifice. The hike will start at J.D. Hammelmore Memorial Park in Sarasota, over the Ringling Bridge, and then back to the park for an afternoon of fun. Registration begins at 8. And then on Memorial Day, May 26th, at 9 a.m., the Manatee County Veterans Council invites all to join them at the Donald L. Courtney Veterans Park for Bradenton's Annual Memorial Day Service. Park is located on the Riverwalk behind the hospital. Also on Memorial Day, the annual Anna Maria Island Memorial Day Observance is changing locations this year. It will be at 10 a.m. at the center and there will be golf cart shuttle service from Roser. Also at 3 p.m. today, please remember that there is a National Moment of Remembrance. It's an annual event that asks Americans wherever they are at 3 p.m. local time to pause for one moment to remember those who made that sacrifice. Veteran services will be at several, if not all, of these events. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item number five, proclamation for National Drug Court Month by Commissioner Ballard.
Drug Court in Manatee County is one of the most impactful programs that we have. Dollar for dollar, I think it does, does more to take people who are in desperate situations and make them into highly functioning members of our community than almost any other program. So, I'm very proud to have the opportunity to present this proclamation today. Whereas, 2025 marks the 28th anniversary of Manatee County Treatment Court. What began as a standalone drug court now includes a Veterans Treatment Court and a Healthcare Court, providing opportunity to more residents of Manatee County. And whereas, since 1997, the Manatee County Treatment Court has more than 1,650 graduates who demonstrate that the Manatee County Treatment Court, with its 81% success rate, has significantly improved substance abuse treatment outcomes and reduced drug abuse and related crime. And whereas, the Treatment Court has reduced drug abuse and related crimes and has done so with less expense than any other justice strategy. Fewer than 20% of Manatee County Treatment Court graduates recidivate and 87 drug-free babies were born into the program. And whereas, the Drug Court movement has grown from 12 original courts in 1994 to a national organization of 3,057 operational drug courts and 3,882 problem-solving courts as of December of 2020. And whereas, Tuesday, May 20th, 2025, is designated as the day Manatee County Treatment Court celebrates National Drug Court Month and the promise of recovery and restored hope to Treatment Court graduates and their families. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that May 2025 shall be known, designated, and set aside as National Drug Court Month in Manatee County, Florida, adopted with a quorum present and voting this 20th day of May 2025 and signed by our chair, George Cruz.
Good morning. First of all, I want to thank the Board of County Commissioners for supporting our drug courts. I just want to say that our treatment courts are, in my opinion, very much like an incubator, a startup incubator. We provide people with a place where they can learn and they can grow and find support. And then we provide them with what I call startup capital to go out, go back out into the world and become productive citizens. Today, I brought four people with me from the program. Two of them are actually still in the program, but they're about to graduate, first time I've done that. But I brought them because of what they're actually doing right now, even before they get out. And then I have a couple of people who've already graduated and they're going to tell you what Drug Court has done for them. And I also have Angela Dunbar from Centerstone, one of our partners.
How you doing, everybody? Ladies and gentlemen, it's an honor to be here. As an ex-criminal and drug addict, Drug Court has really gave me the opportunity to provide me a new structure. With use of my counselor and the requirements of the program, I've been able to progress as an individual for the society. And I'm now Program Director for Courage Change Recovery Homes. They've helped me make an amazing turnaround and I can't thank them enough. That's all I got.
Hello, guys. Jason Rome, mine, I too. Obviously, I'm in Drug Court. I was not a good person at all. I've got a tremendous criminal history, been in prison six times, but with the help of Drug Court, I, they started me in a halfway house. That kind of gave me a stepping stone to get down into society. Now, I got my own home, I got a car, I got a great job, I got a good woman. I got friends that matter, you know what I mean? Like, real friends that don't want me for the stuff I had, you know? I can, I can see myself being a protective member of society now that I've been in this program. And the counselors are great. The judge, he sees you for you, you know what I mean? He doesn't carry on stuff from before. He, he, he's really, he's there for us, you know what I mean? And it's a, it's a great program. That's all I got.
Hey, guys. My name's Brittany. I am a graduate of Drug Court. I've been graduated since December. This was my third Drug Court, 16th treatment. But something about Manatee County's Drug Court really changed everything for me. It's really been a struggle for me to be able to get my life together where I was happy enough to continue it on. And in the beginning of Drug Court, they took away all of my control over anything outside of myself and they kept that control away. So, the only thing that I could move forward was doing things for myself. Like, there was no way for me to get out of the treatment program I was in unless I made the moves. There was no way for me to get better unless I did the therapy. And so, by consistently doing that every day and realizing that I couldn't control anything else around me but me, it really, it really allowed me, when I got out, to realize that nothing else has anything to do with me but me. I now manage two resorts on Longboat Key. Me and my fiance just opened up our third LLC. I privately manage some homes on Anna Maria Island for vacation rentals. I bought my own home while in Drug Court. I have my son back living with me and it sounds so corny because I even emailed Alfred this, but I am so generally happy with my life. Like, it is, it's disgustingly corny how happy I am. And, and it's like that every day, even when things are awful, like, my life I've just built is so amazing and so great and comes from a place of humility and gratitude that you can't shake that. And I think Drug Court really allowed that to instill in me this time and I'm more than grateful because I am not meant for prison. So, so I appreciate you guys having me here and thank you very much.
Already got me crying, Brittany. Hello. I, I was thinking about what I was going to say today and, of course, that all went out the window. I stood before you a year ago in this very spot and I'd just gotten out of jail in January. It was my second, this is my second round in Drug Court. I had to take the HIT program. And last year, I didn't get to drive here. I rode the bus. I was in a halfway house. I just stepped into the halfway house management role and I still wanted to try to control everything in my life. Well, being that halfway house manager and what I learned in recovery pod in Manatee County Jail because of Sheriff Wales, you see the woman that's standing in front of you today. I have all four of my children. I'm actually a mentor for Drug Court now and I'll be soon graduating from what he just said. I have my own home, not bought yet, but I get to do so many things today. I work for Hand Up to Victory. I get to do this and live my recovery every day and help others get into their recovery as well. I have sponsors. I'm a role model for my children. I love my church. And I have God to thank you and all of Manatee County for the life that I get to live and the freedom that I have to do so. So, thank you very much.
I'm Angela Dunbar from Centerstone and, as Alfred said, we partner with Drug Court to provide services. And I only wanted to come today to congratulate these individuals because Drug Court is hard. It's not easy for those who have never done it. These individuals are with us for quite some time, 12 months?
Eighteen.
Oh, gosh. Okay, 18 months and 20. So, it's hard and congratulations because the walk they're taking is a hard one and I just wanted to give them kudos and congratulations today.
I did want to make one more comment. Three of the four people I have here are what we call HIT, High Intensive Track. These are people who normally would be going to prison had Drug Court not accepted them. And these are also the people who've now changed their lives, giving back. Jason didn't mention it, but he's getting ready to open his own halfway house when he gets up out of here. He didn't say that. But Brittany was headed to prison, Jason, and Austin. So, the HIT Track has allowed people who normally would not be here to have that opportunity. One more thing, Drug Court is also a collaboration because we have the state attorney, probation, PD, we have all of those, we have the sheriff and Centerstone, and we work together as a unit to help people recover and get their lives back. So, we want to say thank you for your support once again.
I just want to congratulate all of you once again. The accountability that you display, the humility, the gratitude, it's just so, so evident and I'm just, I'm proud of, I'm proud of you all and proud to support Drug Court. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I, before you go, I have Commissioner Beard on the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I just want, I appreciate each and every one of your boldness to come up here and give us your testimony on the effects of what Drug Court has done for you and your lives. I mean, I've personally seen the results through friends who I have, who've been through the program. And now they're working, rebuilding relationships and contributing to our community, which is awesome to see. And I also want to thank Commissioner Ballard as well for really advocating on Drug Court because we do see results in this community. And when we see results, this is something that this board can get behind. And so, I just appreciate your boldness and you guys coming up here because it does take boldness to come up here and give us your testimony, right? And it takes, you know, courage to do that. So, I just, I appreciate each and every one of you and I thank you for your words today.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Ron, last up for National Stop the Bleed Day.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's an honor to be able to do this proclamation today. In fact, this issue is so, so big that we actually, in our drones, our emergency drones, we have tourniquets that we fly out to folks that need those. So, with that, let's move forward with the proclamation. Whereas, Stop the Bleed is a national public health campaign launched at the White House Ceremony in 2015. And whereas, it's gold to save a lives by training people across the country how to stop traumatic bleeding. And whereas, excessive bleeding is the leading cause of death for those under the age of 40. And whereas, the campaign is a public-private partnership led by the United States Department of Defense with support from key organizations including the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, Stop the Bleed Coalition, and the American Red Cross. And whereas, the campaign is based on lessons learned by the Department of Defense in Afghanistan and Iraq on treating severe blood loss. And the 4th, Thursday of May, is proclaimed Stop the Bleed Day to encourage the public to learn lifesaving techniques. Now, therefore, let it be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that May 22nd, 2025, shall be known and designated and set aside as National Stop the Bleed Day in Manatee County, Florida, adopted with a quorum present and voting this 20th day of May, 2025, and signed by our chairman, George Cruz. Thank you all very much for being here today.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing us to be here. My name is Carol Bissinger and I'm the Director of the Trauma Program at HCA Florida Blake Hospital. We are a Level 2 Trauma Center here in Manatee County. It has been our honor and privilege to be able to provide the Stop the Bleed training to over 11,000 citizens of Manatee County. We've partnered with Manatee County School Systems, Cedar Hammock Fire Department, Manatee County Public Works, and others that have partnered with us to help provide this essential training. Today and this week, we are providing training to all of the Manatee County area transit bus drivers. And in addition, HCA Florida Blake Hospital is donating 100 Stop the Bleed kits that will be located on each one of the Manatee County area transit buses. We at the Trauma Center can certainly care for the patients once they arrive, but if they have life-threatening bleeding out in the field, we can't get to them there. We are training our citizens to be able to provide that temporary lifesaving bleeding control, which will allow our Manatee County EMS folks to come. Now, they're carrying blood on their units, which makes our job at the Trauma Center that much easier. So, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Thank you all. Thank you all very much. All right, and that's the end of our proclamations. We will backtrack now to the presentation, the presentation by Feeding Tampa Bay.
Hi, good morning. Tracy Adams, Deputy Director, Community and Veteran Services. And I'd like to introduce Lorena Hardwick with Feeding Tampa Bay. She's going to go over their annual report to highlight the good work that they are doing in the communities they serve and Manatee County is one of them. And I do have some packets I'll share with the clerk. Good morning, Chair and Honorable Commissioners. Really appreciate the time that you've given. Feeding Tampa Bay, myself, apologies, Mr. Mance was not available. We're dividing and conquer. We had a lot of different things going on this week, so you get me. I am the Chief External Affairs Officer for Feeding Tampa Bay, Lorena Hardwick. So, again, it's a pleasure being here. We'll start with the presentation. Have a clicker. Who we serve and who we are with Feeding Tampa Bay. We will be celebrating one year in our new facility that we just moved into, 3624 Causeway Boulevard. It is in Tampa. It's right across the street from the Port of Tampa Bay. We serve about 1 million food insecure individuals in the 10-county region. As far north as Citrus, as far as down as Highlands, Manatee, Hardy. And here are some of just, this is just kind of a quick overview of Manatee County and some of the communities we serve. In Tampa, or not Tampa, in Florida, 46% of the families that we are serving are ALIS families. I'm sure you guys have heard that terminology, which is asset limited, income constrained individuals. They're the ones that are sometimes making minimum wage, have children, and just cannot make ends meet. That is probably about 90% of the population that we are serving in our communities and that where we're seeing the greatest need. Another... Um, another stark statistic that unfortunately just continues to stay level is the poverty that we see in children. Um, children living in households, um, that are either below the poverty level and/or experiencing hunger. Um, so again, these are, um, the individuals that we are serving on a daily basis. Um, just some statistics for Manatee County. I think one of the bigger ones is as we look at, um, the health insurance rate for those that are under sixty-five, there's about a fifteen percent, um, gap there where people are not, uh, having health insurance. And what we're seeing, and in our new facility, as Feeding Tampa Bay has grown and evolved, um, we are looking at not just food as a resource. We will always be there to provide the meal, to provide the groceries, but we're also looking at it, how do we achieve, um, self-sufficiency for an individual? So, when someone comes into our, um, facility, it's not just to buy the, get, get the groceries, um, the free groceries. It's not just to get the meal, but it's also to sit down with one of our navigators or social workers to have a conversation and to better understand, is it that you lack health insurance? Is it high medical bills that you're dealing with that are, you know, that are, uh, contributing to your struggle? Um, is it potentially, um, transportation issues or is it childcare? What we've designed is a center that has six colo, uh, six agencies that are co-located within us and about twenty-five other nonprofits that rotate in and out based on the need as we're seeing, uh, the individuals coming through the facility. Our countywide numbers, uh, here for Manatee, um, we do have twenty-five community partners, um, here within this county. Um, we are increasing this year and into next year, the number of school pantries that we have. I know that there's one that's gonna be coming online here in Bradenton at the YMCA. But those are all, um, public-private partnerships, um, with our school pantries. Uh, usually it is a lot of our corporate donors that come through. We talk to the superintendents in schools and we, um, to get a better understanding of, uh, which schools have the greatest need and we work with our donors and with our partners to be able to stand up these pantries in our schools. Our economic, uh, output, uh, we do host, uh, workforce training. We have three tracks. CDL Driver's License for Truck Drivers. We also have, um, Culinary Arts. And in addition to that, we have Warehouse Logistics. We currently have, uh, twenty-five going through the cohort right now. Uh, the facility again that we're in, we have a eleven thousand square foot kitchen, so we're very excited to start, uh, increasing the numbers, um, that come through the culinary program. And of course, uh, with more space, we're also excited to increase the number of individuals that are looking, um, to gain employment. We are a second chance employer, so a lot of the individuals that come through have had a tough time, have been either previously incarcerated, have left the, uh, foster care system and, um, just need direction and guidance. So, we are very proud of the programs, uh, those three programs that we are, um, currently, uh, uh, doing. And we're also looking forward to other partnerships, uh, currently that we're having conversations with some more of our technical colleges and community colleges to start increasing the opportunities, um, for training in our community. Expansion of services. Um, when it comes to food and our community partners, um, we are there also to invest, uh, through grant programs. Uh, we have, uh, dollars that we then were the pass-through. We invested in our agencies, especially after our hurricanes, um, back-to-back last year. What we saw was so many agencies lost, their refrigerators, uh, their, their coolers or freezers were flooded out. So, we were able to reinvest through grant dollars, um, specifically, um, for this resilience, um, to get those agencies back up. Um, we could not do the work that we do without the partner agencies. Uh, we do have about three hundred and seventy-seven of them in that ten county region. So, we're always looking at, um, opportunities to invest in them, help them expand, and help them expand our reach as well. Um, I, I just mentioned the disaster recovery. Uh, I know that through our partner agencies here in Manatee, um, there was a lot of outreach. I appreciate all of you that, I know I reached out to all of your office and I truly appreciate, um, all of the response and I know that everyone was out there volunteering. So, again, appreciate your partnership. That is just a, a quick overview of what we're doing. In your package, you do have the full annual report. You have, um, some information just about the county itself, some of the programs that we are running. Um, others, uh, you have our four pillars. Uh, like I said, we have grown and evolved as an organization, so we are really looking at, um, the root cause of hunger, right? It's hunger is a symptom of a lot of different, uh, issues that are going on in our communities and in our families. So, if you have any questions, I'm here for questions, but my contact information is there as well and door is always open. Um, hope to continue the relationship moving forward.
So, the, the grocery, the, the big thing that we talked about for years, that's open up in Tampa, correct?
Yes, that we do have a market on campus.
Do you keep track of who utilizes that? I mean, we don't have inter-county transportation, so it was built in Hillsborough. I know it was requested that we assist on that, but do you run any kind of statistics to show what percentage of people utilizing that or Manatee or Sarasota or Pinellas? Or is it almost exclusively Hillsborough County people? And, and is that, how is that impacting involvement in Manatee County for our, so is, is that in addition to or is that kind of a shift in focus which is adjusted?
No, it's in addition to and I don't have the statistics as far as how many, um, coming to our facility would be from this re, particular area. But we do track by zip code to understand, uh, to start understanding where the most need is. That's how we've always tracked, so I could get that information for you for sure.
Yeah, I'd be interested. I mean, at the end of the day, I mean, the, the, the gas and transportation costs to get there would probably net out the benefit of free bread. Um, so I am curious. I, I had meant to ask previously when it first opened, you know, what the, the target was, 'cause I didn't see any advertising or anything down here, so I assumed it wasn't targeted down here. Uh, so I was just making sure, you know, if that, if that's the Hillsborough focus, that we're not losing focus of Manatee County needs as well.
Yeah, no, it's, uh, the facility was just, uh, we needed it in a location. We had been in Hillsborough, so we just needed it in a location that was centrally located, about two hours either north or two hours south. But here in Manatee, we have about twenty-five partners where, um, they, we do have, um, MOUs with them or different ways where they can pick up groceries from, um, rescue groceries from the different stores, the varying partners, and that's what's delivered, um, to the community. We also do, um, drop shipments and, I mean, we're, we're around. That's why again, I, I mentioned we have about three hundred and seventy-seven overall, but I think here in Manatee, we have about twenty-five agencies that, uh, community partners that we work with to make sure that the food is coming out.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? They have none? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We just got the packet, so we'll review the packet and I'm sure as people have questions, they'll reach out.
Have a great day. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to consent. Are there any items any Commissioners wish to pull from consent? Seeing none, I will open up public comment for anything on consent. Is there any public comment on consent? I do not have anyone listed. Anyone on the, no one's on the phones. So, I will close public comment and I will entertain motions to approve consent.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
I have a motion by Commissioner Ron, second by Commissioner Bearden. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Oh, sorry. Commissioner Phelps. Uh, Commissioner Phelps is an aye. Um, that is approved, six-two-zero, with Commissioner Siddiq absent. I will now open up citizen comment for future agenda items. That's literally anything that's not on this current agenda. Uh, I do not have anybody signed up, so it's first come, first served, up to the podium.
Andrea Griffin, Manatee, uh, County activist, advocate. Um, uh, there were some comments that I made here last week, um, related to the gas, uh, and also the purchase of Lakewood Ranch. And I just want to say, I do understand that the gas here is not an issue of the county, but more a state issue, but I still think that we need to be doing something with our local, uh, gas tax. And I also still disagree, um, with the way the purchase of the Lakewood Ranch property happened. But I don't really necessarily disagree with the cost, um, but we're going to, you know, what are we gonna be doing with the overpriced property of Lena Road? And it was, you know, again, purchased for the same, for the same reasons. Um, I'd like a policy, I'd like to see something where the residents have a little more control over the spending. I don't want to make it, you know, completely radical, but I really do think that we need a, a dollar, uh, limit on what we can add to the consent agenda. I, I really do, you know? Uh, if, if we have a million dollars here, I mean, we can afford a million dollars, but if that happens a hundred times a year or fifty times a year, you're talking about fifty million dollars that could potentially be wasted of taxpayer money and resources. And then we have the animal shelter and I just want to know, are we on target for the animal shelter? Um, I believe last year, uh, we were told that we were on target for a December twenty-twenty-five opening or something to that effect. So, I'd like to know a little more about, um, the animal shelter and where are we with that? And I'm hoping that we don't see any more expenses, increased expenses on that, just saying. Thank you.
These are notes?
Those mine too?
I guess so.
I guess they are.
For the record, Glenn Gadd, fly Gibilina. So, Recovery Works, that was a great presentation. You know, last night I was at the Sarasota Manatee County Native Plant Society and, uh, John Thaxton spoke. Great guy, had a lot of good stuff to say, but the one thing he said, he said on development, on your roads, your future roads that you say we're gonna go from two to four, already built out. You can't, you don't have any room to go three lanes now, right? So, we're already at capacity. So, when it comes on you two, I'm going to, uh, send that to each and one of you. It was a gr, it's Salby Gardens, what a, what a nice venue and a lot of information. So, I'll get that off to you. I do want to bring up, uh, mixing farms. I think it's a, still a great idea. What a, what a way to preserve our, um, our heritage. Water meters. You know, it's funny that, uh, George, I talked to you about this, that about, I, I don't know, seven, eight months ago, I pulled a permit to put, uh, county water in, right? And at that time, I said, well, let me, let me finance because I'm on a fixed income, social security, right? Oh, we'll get it on the next agenda. That's months ago. One, I'd like to know where my, where my application is, but you know, you did have time to send? You had time to send me, hey, Mr. Gibilina, that water meter that you wanted, it's due for inspection. It's unbelievable, the incompetency that you, you, you want to charge me.
It's not a water meter, it's a backflow.
It's a backflow, right.
It's different.
It's not installed. Nothing is installed and you want to come out and inspect it. So, I would suggest that if you're gonna inspect it, go do it at the, at the Utilities Department. Uh, the other thing I want to bring up is, uh, public comment. You know, we, uh, we do public comment up here and sometimes we get shut down because it's ju, quasi-judicial or whatever. You don't have that right. Our First Amendment says we can talk about anything we want without interruption, whether it's quasi-judicial or not. So, please, don't interrupt me if, 'cause a lot of us, if I'm on the phone, I ain't got time to wait two hours till it comes up on the consent agenda. The other thing is, is policy and procedures. So, at the last board meeting, planning board meeting, we had tell, you know, say bullshit, Dr. McCann saying horseshit, and I think at one time you used the F-word up there, but I say I'm a pain in ass, I get escorted out of the building. So, if we're gonna do policy, I think council should say, call you out as well. So, do I need to get elected to go up there and swear? I, I don't get it. So, the point is, if, if we're gonna, we should have a level playing field. I will not tolerate it being escorted out of the building when your own elected officials are swearing. That would generate a Florida bar complaint.
I, I, I will point out in the middle of this that you just swore twice and I did not have you escorted out of the building, so that goes for that. Uh, any other public comments? Any other public comments? Is there anyone on the phones? You took off the Zoom thing, so I can't see.
No callers, Mr. Chair.
All right, then I will close public comment and I will quickly answer a couple of things so we can move on. Uh, Lena Road, it, it's four to five hundred dollars a foot to build office space right now. If you were to build the same building on Lena Road, it costs us forty to fifty million dollars. I'm not gonna spend fifty million dollars building this building on land we own, just to use the land we own instead of buying the same building for twenty-three million dollars. That's incredibly short-sighted and a poor use of tax dollars. This land is costing us virtually nothing to carry right now. We're gonna have long-term growth needs. Maybe it's tomorrow, maybe it's in ten years, maybe it's in fifty years. We now own this property to do something with it. Um, you know, at some point in time, we'll need animal welfare out there. At some point in time, we'll need more fleet out there. There's gonna be use for Lena Road. Overspending money at a time where construction costs are extremely high, just to use the land is, is a poor argument against the Lakewood Ranch property. As for consent, I'm not, uh, going to approve maximum limits on it. If you want to waste tax dollars, then put sixty items onto an agenda and sit here for twenty-four hours with all of our staff discussing each and every little thing. Everything's on there, all the documents are on there. You're more than welcome to look at it. Anyone up here is welcome to pull it. You're welcome to speak on it or advocate for it before or after a meeting. We're not going to have an individual hearing for every single one of them. And the last thing, animal shelter, I did post information on the status of that. Um, it wasn't last year, we said twenty-twenty-five. Last year, they were saying mid-twenty-twenty-six. I'm the one who pushed them to get it done by twenty-twenty-five and that was earlier this year. Uh, we are on pace to do that. Uh, I posted a lengthy update on Facebook about that. The county sent out a lengthy update on that. It's a process to build. People think we could snap our fingers and all of a sudden kennels show up. We have to put in the pads, we have to put in the utilities, we have to get the work done. We are still on pace to have Bishop completed and the animals out of Palmetto before the end of twenty-twenty-five, as I asked them to do. We are already limiting capacity out in Palmetto because we're imminently ready to open up the kennels we put over at the jail, what MSO and Sheriff Wells are gonna facilitate with us. That's gonna take over thirty dogs out and lower the capacity so we don't have outdoor dogs during the summer, which has been a problem in the past. And Bishop will be done before the end of the year. It's on pace, everything's done. We've already approved the, uh, the, the contract to purchase the kennels. They just can't be delivered until the pads, everything's ready, 'cause they're prefab. They just get dropped on top of everything. That's why you don't see that work being the kennels out there, because they're the last step, not the first step. With that, there's nobody else on the board, so I will, uh, close public, well, I already closed public comment and we got time. So, let's move on to, uh, we have three presentations upon request. Item number fifty-nine, Adoption of Ordinance twenty-five dash twenty-nine to amend section two dash two, four-point-one, and two dash two, four-point-five of the Manatee County Code of Ordinances to further clarify and ensure court costs are accurately collected in non-criminal and criminal traffic cases. Does anyone want a presentation on this?
Not me.
Yeah, I wish you would've said that before I read that. Okay. Commissioner Phelps, would you like a presentation on what I just read?
I'm good.
All right. I will open that up to public comment. I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner McCann, second by Commissioner Bearden, but we have public comment. Nobody? There's no one on the phone? I will close public comment. There's nobody on the board. You can cast your votes now. Commissioner Phelps, how do you vote? Commissioner Phelps, how do you vote?
Lips, that's a yes.
All right, that is a yes. It's approved, six-two-zero, with Commissioner Siddiq absent. Item number sixty, County Attorney, or County Minister, why don't you read that one?
Adoption of Resolution R twenty-five dash seventy-nine, Approval of Change, Changes to the Infrastructure Sales Tax Project and Equipment List to Add a Project in the Transportation Category, Dash Sidewalks, and Budget Amendment Resolution B dash twenty-five dash oh-seven-two dash one.
All right, anyone want a presentation on this one? Commissioner Phelps? Presentation?
I'm good.
All right, I will open this up to public comment. Seeing none, I will close public comment. No one's on the board. I'm looking for a motion. The motion by Commissioner Ballard, second by Commissioner McCann. You can cast your votes now. Commissioner Phelps, how do you vote?
That's a yea.
All right, then. That is approved, six-two-zero, with Commissioner Siddiq absent. Item number sixty-one. Item number 61.
Public Hearing Notice of Intent to Seek Community Development Block Building Grant Disaster Recovery, CDBG-DR, Funding and Authorization and Submission of the Rebuild Florida Hazard Mitigation Grant Match Program, HMGMP, Application for the Manatee County R. Dan Nolan Middle School Generator Grant, Local Match Award, District 1.
Anyone want a presentation on this?
Nope.
Commissioner Felts.
I'm good.
All right, then. No one's on the board, open up the public comment. Seeing none, no one's on the phone, I will close public comment. I have a motion by Commissioner McCann, seconded by Commissioner Ballard, you can cast your votes now.
That's a yay.
That is a yay from Commissioner Felts, and that is approved 6-2-0 with Commissioner Siddiq absent. Now we got a presentation scheduled. Item number 62.
Item number 62, Public Hearing and Adoption of Resolution R-25-071, Approving the Inventory List of County Land Available for Use as Affordable Housing Within the Jurisdiction of Manatee County, Florida.
Tracy.
Good morning, again. Tracy Adams with Community and Veteran Services. Before I tell you a few things about this item, I did want to introduce to you to Helena Yeatman. I'm not going to make her get up and walk down here, she is on crutches. She is our new affordable housing coordinator, and she started in March and has jumped right in. She has affordable housing background out of Chicago.
How she hurt herself.
How did she hurt herself? I am not sure. It wasn't here, it wasn't here.
Hopefully it wasn't on.
It was surveying land, no. Affordable housing. So, we have gone through, we are required by the state to put together this list, and we have gone through the proper evaluation that is required. There are eight properties on this list, and that's what we have come before you to do. There are no funding obligations, we just need you to approve the list so that we can post it. It's a growing, moving, ongoing list. Just once every three years, we have to come before you to formally present it to you in a public hearing forum. We are in the process, we being CVS, we are in the process of developing an application process, so if there are individuals, developers, agencies interested in any of these lands, whether it's to purchase or for us to convey it to them, they will go through an application process. CVS is good at a lot of things, but one thing we're very good at is applications, reviewing, and scoring. So, since we do that with a lot of money we give out, items that we give out to individuals, we felt that that was the way to go with this as well. So, you have before you the list.
Okay, and I just want to clarify before the two public comments. When we put together this list by state requirement, it's about properties that per, our current existing today code are buildable, not hypothetical buildable based upon my conversations and other people on this board's conversations about expanding opportunities on lots. So, when you're looking at this, you go through all the different departments, because sometimes utility says, "Hey, don't surplus that or don't put that up yet, because we may need that for a stormwater thing, because it was flooding over there." Or Chad may say, "Hey, we, we may need that parcel to widen a road, we need that right away." You're taking what's left, and then you're taking the parcels that, due to setbacks, size requirements, zoning classifications, would be allowable based on today's code. I've been pushing very hard to get rid of minimum lot sizes. My argument has been, if we actually did that, this list would be substantially larger, because now all of a sudden you got 1,000 square foot, 2,000 square foot, 3,000 square foot lots that currently aren't on here. So someone may have found a 2,000 square foot lot someplace and unincorporated, but our current code, until it's changed, God willing, does not allow that to be built, so we can't surplus that as buildable for affordable housing at today's, right? So these are just lots that, if someone took one of these parcels, could build affordable housing as of right based on our code today.
That is correct, Commissioner.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that. Commissioner Beard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Question is, how does somebody go about obtaining one of these lots?
So that is what we're currently working on, Commissioners, to come up with a process that is fair to anyone who may be interested in this, rather than just having people knock on our door willy-nilly, for lack of a better phrase, and to come up with a structured process to apply for the property. And we would do our due diligence with the information requested of the individual or the company to make sure that they actually have the wherewithal to develop on the land, and not just a want.
Okay. Have we done this before?
So I can't speak to how these properties were previously conveyed. I know of the last one was conveyed, I think, back in maybe 2021, 2022, but don't hold that to me. It was conveyed to a nonprofit who built an affordable house on it, then used the proceeds to build a second home, and I think that Laura just came before you, maybe last meeting or two meetings ago.
Okay. So what type of ideas are you coming up with in order to possibly execute a sale on these particular properties?
So it could be a-
Give me some ideas.
Yeah, it would be a sale or convey. We would look at what their financials look like, so that we know that they can actually afford to build the affordable housing, what their past history is with affordable housing, and what we're looking at with these lots, we're looking at probably individual homes. We're not looking at, like, sometimes what comes before you for affordable housing are apartment complexes for rent. So these are smaller lots.
So what if somebody had cash that wanted just to purchase one of these lots? They have to be in a specific demographic in order to purchase these lots, or is this going to be open to anybody?
So to develop on it, it would be open to anyone, but then they have to develop affordable housing. So if it's going to be a house that will be sold, then it has to be sold at an affordable rate with those who are applying, then that's a whole second set of applications, is for the individuals who would want to purchase the home at an affordable rate, maybe with our first-time homebuyers program through our department, and things of that nature. So right now, we're just talking about what's available to develop on. Usually, the person who will live in the home, if it, if it is a home, is not the one who's doing the developing. It'll be developed and then sold at an affordable rate.
Okay, so what type of data are we going to obtain in order to figure out what's affordable and what's not? If I, if I'm a buyer and I'm like, "I want to buy this piece of land, I've got the money", are you saying, "I can't build a house that's worth over $300,000"?
Right, there will be the guidelines that we utilize now through HUD, and what we currently utilize with our SHIP program, and that, that will be the same structure. And so, the developer of the property will understand that's what it is before they even apply, so that they know whether they want to or not.
Okay. All right, thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ballard.
And so you're currently in the process of, of putting together the, you know, the application. When do you anticipate that, that that will be done and people will actually be able to, to go in and apply to purchase these properties?
I can't see it taking more than two to three months to be completed. We're practically done with it currently, based on what had previously been done. Unfortunately, affordable housing has kind of hopped around with different departments, but we've gathered information of how things were done previously, good, bad, or indifferent, to try to make a better product.
And then, once the process is open, I'm assuming that there will be kind of a, an application period and then a review period, is that right?
That is correct. We will open it and announce that, and it will have a start date and an end date, and then a period of time to review and score.
Okay. Those are my only questions, thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to see that and talk to you about it before we push that. I mean, because if you look at this list, we were talking about single-family homes and for sale, with the exception of one because it's Zone A1, and one because it's a little smaller, I just don't think it's that small, all of these lots should have more than one unit on them. If they don't, then we're, we're doing a disservice to this community. So I don't think this should, I don't think any auction should come down, or bid should come down to who offers the most money. It should be a combination of the, the cost, which I really don't care about, this is surplus land. Not that I don't want more money than less money, but the intent of surplusing this land for affordable housing shouldn't be a revenue generator for the county, it should be a benefit to the community. And I care more about who's going to do the most good with this land than who's going to pay the most. Because what's going to happen is you're going to get a for-profit developer come in here and just offer you the most money and put a nice house with a pool and then whatever on there. Some of these things are, you know, nearly an acre. I mean, these are, you could put a lot, and, and even these 8,000 square foot lots, they're on R6. Someone should be able to put a triplex or quadplex on these lots right here and get four units out of it, not one person putting one unit out of it.
Right, and I apologize that I, I did not communicate properly, I just meant there wouldn't be rental, big rental units put on there. So you could have a property that is broken into maybe three, two or three parcels.
But in real life, quadplexes are more or less the correct amount, like rental, like, you, you're, you're much better off as a community if we build a ton of triplexes and quadplexes, than we are just building a bunch of 400 square foot apartment complex, or 400 unit apartment complexes everywhere. I'd much rather see triplexes and quadplexes. And all of these, except for one, would be able to have that. So, just my opinion.
Yep, duly noted.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner McCann, seconded by Commissioner Ron, I will open this up to public comment. Glenn?
For the record, Glenn Gadd, fly Gibilina. So, you're bound by Florida statutes to do the right thing, and George, you got the right moral compass on this. Here's what it says, "Any surplus property for affordable housing must, shall, not maybe we'll think about it, must be offered to a nonprofit first and foremost." That's what the statute said. So when you say, "Oh, I think we're going to sell it for the highest bid," it doesn't work that way, and it shouldn't work that way. We're only talking about six lots here, and I have physically been on every one of them. And believe me, George, they're not in a neighborhood that wants a single dwelling with a pool in the back. These are marginalized areas, you should be jumping up and down to give this to a nonprofit to put either a rental or affordable housing. You got a good program here, and by the way, that first one, 10 years, I brought that up 10 years ago. We're finally getting it on the affordable housing. That's great. I'm glad we're moving forward. But, you know, Habitat, Trinity Without Borders, any other nonprofit, community solutions, they all should have a first, they should have the first bite at the apple, absolutely. And then a developer, if they come in, there should be a Laura wrapped around it. There's going to be a 20 or 25-year Laura Land Use Restricted Agreement that says, "You will rent this for this," or if you sell it, "You should participate in the Down Payment Assistance Program." That program is a home run. The last house that Trinity Without Borders built got a $70,000 down payment assistance, and you conveyed the land for zero. All those savings were passed along to the buyer. So now you've got a school bus driver living there for about $1,100 a month. That's where we want to be with every surplus lot. And as far as the other ones, that there's no other ones available, I don't believe that. You guys own hundreds of pieces of property, regardless of minimum lot size, right? And I hope we move forward in that direction. But I have to tell you, there is a community benefit in conveying the land to nonprofits, because we've got enough for-profit developers that are in it for the greed, and we need to step away. Any, anything, and again, you're bound by statute, you have to, you have to offer to nonprofits first. And then if, if nobody, no nonprofit steps up, then you should really hone in on a developer that does affordable housing and tie him into a Laura, and tie him into the first-time buyer assistance. If they don't want to come to the plate and offer that to their customers, then they shouldn't be considered. Then they're doing exactly what you say, George, they're doing it for profit. Thank you for this time, I'm glad we're moving forward.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Thank you.
All right, and no one's on the phone, I will close public comment. I still have a motion by Commissioner McCann, seconded by Commissioner Ron, no one's on the board, so you can cast your votes now. You all have, except for Commissioner Felts, how do you vote?
That's a yay.
That's a yay. That is approved 6-2-0 with Commissioner Siddiq absent.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Item number 72.
Yes, this is Acceptance of a Grant Award for Medical Equipment for the Animal Welfare Community Center and Adoption of Budget Amendment Resolution B-25-088, Amending the FY 2025 Manatee County Annual Budget. Sarah Brown and Veronica Thames with the Community, Manatee Community Foundation, please.
Good morning. Excuse me, Sarah Brown, Director of Community and Veteran Services. Back in February, you all granted animal services permission to apply for a grant with the Community Foundation, and we won that grant of, in the amount of $50,000 for the Resource Center for medical equipment. Not only is this going to be such, it's such a huge benefit for the animals, but a huge benefit to our community. One of the biggest reasons people surrender animals is because of lack of accessible medical care. And this will allow us to do spay neuters for free for the public, not at a cost to the county. We'll utilize the Bissell Foundation and other ways to take care of that cost, but that will allow the public to be able to get their animals sterilized, we'll be able to provide wellness care, and help, in all hopes to keep those animals in the home and out of our shelter system.
Good morning, County Commissioners. Chair Cruz, Veronica Thames, Manatee Community Foundation CEO. Manatee Community Foundation is extremely grateful for the opportunity to partner with you once again, and this time to award $50,000 to the support and creation of the Pet Resource Center in downtown Bradenton. And a lot of times you hear what you're not doing well, I just want to make sure you hear the great things you're doing as a county and as a commission and staff. And let's celebrate the vision to not only focus on adoptions, which is what most counties do, but rather to focus on shift on prevention, is to build community, addressing the veterinary costs, behavioral challenges, and access to basic care, which are, as Sarah shared, the top reasons why people surrender their animals. And so MCF will help equip a full-service medical suite, understanding that our nonprofit partners' number one expense is veterinary care. Many times, they have to pay retail rates for animals that have been surrendered because of the lack of capacity. So this new facility will not only support the existing need, but help alleviate the funnel that is happening at our nonprofit partners' facilities as well, expanding everyone's capacity. And so, again, I thank you and I celebrate that relationship between public and partnerships and philanthropy, and I hope that with the doors set to open soon, the center is poised to be a model not only for our internal community, but for other governments to experience and see how the philanthropy, public and private partnerships can make all the difference. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. You know, it's, it's great having these partnerships in Manatee County and all working together, and this Resource Center was something I was super excited about from the time Sarah and I discussed it, and we all kind of looked at opportunities, and, and it's such a great opportunity for our community, as, as you said, it's, it's, you know, prevention, it's like, we do the same thing with housing, like, the easiest way to help homelessness is to keep people in their homes. Well, the easiest way to help with overcapacity in our shelters is not to have dogs there, but now people give them up for senseless reasons like, like training or food or medical care. This is, this is an amazing grant that we're receiving, and everyone here in Manatee County appreciates what you're all doing and our continued partnership with Manatee Community Foundation, so thank you very much, Veronica. I will open this up to public comment. Any public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment, and no one is on the board. I have a motion by Commissioner Ballard, seconded by Commissioner Ron. Commissioner Felts, how do you vote?
That's a yes.
That is a yes. That's the full word this time, she's serious. And it is approved 6-2-0 with Commissioner Siddiq absent. Thank you very much, Veronica, we do appreciate it. Item number 63.
Yes, under Government Relations, Manatee County Housing and Urban Development HUD, Community Development Block Grant, CDBG-DR, Update and Approval of the Draft Action Plan. Michelle Davis.
Good morning, Michelle Davis, Grant Administration Division Manager for Manatee County. We would like to put forward a motion to approve the Lasty Manatee Draft Action Plan. As we have talked about before, this will, after approval, go on our website for 30 days for public comment, and we will be holding at least two public hearings with the dates and locations published on our Lasty Manatee website. The public comment will be incorporated into the final action plan, and then submitted to HUD by June 30th, and we will include our responses to the comments within that action plan. We will receive the HUD agreement in late fall, and we will be ready to begin accepting resident applications in January. So, I'd like to put that motion forward, please.
All right.
I'll move, Chairman.
Commissioner, well, I, I already have motions on the floor, but I appreciate the enthusiasm, Commissioner Felts.
Not a problem, that's a yay.
I, I have a motion by Commissioner McCann, seconded by Commissioner Ballard. I think we've all read the, the draft report, it was way more detailed than I expected to be. was extensive report. I have no one on the board, though. I will open this up to public comments. Seeing none, no one's on the phone. I will close public comment. And again, I have a motion by Commissioner McCann, seconded by Commissioner Ballard. Commissioner Phelps was a yes or a yea?
Yes.
Yes, yes. And as approved 6-2-0 with Commissioner Siddiq absent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And you said that's going to be on the website for 30 days for comment, and then we'll finalize it before some recess. Is that the intent, bring it back on June, late June, or is that after recess?
It's due on June 30th, and there is no meeting before that. It, basically, basically, the only thing that's going to be added are the comments and the responses that we have back to the comments. So we were thinking that at this point, that wouldn't need the pre-reapproval, but if you feel it does, we can do it, hold us up.
Talk to my attorney.
Special session?
No. We'll, we'll figure it out. We're not going to let this bypass.
Thank you.
Okay, item number 64.
Yes, sir. Under Property Management, execution of contract for sale and purchase of, from George C. Graham Jr. for the North Pine Island Environmental Lands Candidate Property, Braineden, Florida 342-08, District 2. Deborah Worth.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, Madam Attorney and County Administrator, Deborah Worth, Environmental Lands Division Manager. Here this morning requesting your support for the conservation acquisition of 13 acres that completes the Pine Island Preserve. So we're referring to this as North Pine Island. You can see its proximity to the dot-dish. I said that wrong. I will say it wrong again, so I'm going to leave it. Critical wildlife area, which is Tampa Bay's only rookery for wood storks. It also supports a lot of permanent and migratory birds. The, just a couple pictures of it. This island is accessible only by boat, but it's a beautiful place to visit. You can paddle up or boat up, and we would appreciate your support on this. It'll help with resource management objectives, prescribed burns, and nuisance species. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions? I don't think so. Commissioner Bearden, did you have any questions? Buying the top part of the silent. All right. I will open up to public comments. Any public comments? Seeing none, no one's on the phone. I will close public comment. I have a motion by Commissioner Ron, seconded by Commissioner Ballard. There's still no one on the board. You can cast your votes now. Commissioner Phelps, how do you vote?
That's a yea.
That's a yea. 6-2-0, approved 6-2-0 with Commissioner Siddiq absent.
Thank you.
All right, let's quickly do this coad one, then I'll have to take a short break just for the clerk, and then we'll come back for the final three things. But we'll move on to item number 65 real quick.
Yeah, under Public Safety, item 65, Adoption of Budget Amendment Resolution B-25-076 for the Coad Public Safety Initiative. I'd like to thank Deputy County Administrator Courtney DePaul and Jody Fisk, and again Veronica Thames for spearheading this idea.
Good morning, Jody Fisk, Director of Public Safety. So our coads are, are communities organizing after a disaster. So in case anyone is keeping count, we are 11 days from the official start of hurricane season. In our emergency operations center, at the Emergency Support Function 15 Desk, which is volunteers and donations, our coad is the seat. They assist us with coordinating efforts to bring in volunteers, resources, donations, stuff like that after a storm. So what is before you today is we are looking to spearhead the initial funding to get their Disaster Resiliency Officer in place with United Way Sun Coast. Really, really good things are, are happening. The, I really want to thank Veronica Thames last year. She was so helpful to the county. I think at one point, she had given us so many different volunteer organizations that we eventually were just like, please stop. Just go talk to the coad people. They will, they will get it organized. So this is in an effort to be as prepared as we possibly can be for this upcoming hurricane season.
All right. No one on the board. Again, we appreciate everything you're doing. Yeah. Does anyone, does anyone want to talk about what you're?
Yeah.
Heather, do you want to say anything?
Veronica Thames, Manatee Community Foundation CEO. Again, thank you for entertaining me. As you know, last year, we had a trifecta of storms. Our community suffered greatly. MCF, as our team behind me will say, became the de facto coad lead. And as Jody clearly stated, coad, community organizations active in disaster, not just nonprofits, but any non-government organization working together to support the efforts of the county and the cities in need. MCF, Manatee actually had a very viable coad several years ago, and during this trifecta of storms, we discovered that it had dwindled. And post-storm, MCF convened CLASP. Many of you know CLASP as community leaders aligning strategies and partnerships. We have our funding sources, Bishop Parker, Manatee Community Foundation, and the top officials of every business organization, as well as city and county present. We meet quarterly, and we address issues and try to align and leverage each other's strengths. When CLASP met, that, that time after the storms, we did a deep dive on what worked and what had opportunities. One of the challenges was how the nonprofit organizations attempted to support the community and had a lot of challenges. And MCF had been at the helm in that space, so we requested this CLASP committee to, or group, rather, to meet and hear from the representatives of a very successful coad. So we've invited them. We heard how it works, what best practices exist, what challenges exist as well, and this CLASP group discussed the matter and empowered MCF to pursue with the county's partnership financial and manpower resources to revive and invest in this coad for the long haul. Because let's face it, none of us predicted COVID, and we are going to get more storms. So we know this will happen again, and we've got to be in a state of readiness, resilience, and preparedness. So focusing on that work, MCF partnered with Sarah Brown and Jody and Courtney DePaul, and we launched this coad again. Today, we're happy to say, after several meetings, we're 70-plus nonprofits strong and growing very, very quickly. MCF then convened Bishop Parker Private Foundation, the county, and United Way, thankful that our United Way friends accepted the challenge posed by the rest of us to become the leader organization, the logistics chief of this coad effort. So grateful to say that they have the infrastructure, the support, and a five-county presence that allows us to access other brainpower and resources within their network. So we're grateful again to United Way, to the county, and to all of those who partnered. And I'll say, MCF is not only interested in being the convener and funder upfront, but we have a greater interest that is long-term. Our community foundation's mission is to exist in perpetuity, unlike other organizations or even public officials with their term. So we want to ensure that there is a long-term sustainability funding plan for this coad, that it never is at risk again, and that we are able to rely on 850 nonprofits that are in this region providing services to our community coordinated by a chief leader, that in this case will be the United Way. But not today, but for the future. So I encourage us, not for this conversation, but in the future, to discuss about what the long-term funding option would be. An example would be a fund at Manatee Community Foundation that is endowed or semi-indowed that could produce those results. It could be another, another vehicle. Whichever vehicle it is, I encourage this commission to consider dedicating dollars to the long-term sustainability of this coad. And I just want to stop for one more second and recognize the Herculean efforts that Sarah Brown and the county team with Jody and Courtney DePaul, Bishop Parker and United Way put forth to launch this mid, mid emerging from storms for resilience, immediate recovery, but also to emerge into long-term recovery groups in the future as the coad is established. So thank you again for your vision and your focus and your support, and again, for partnerships between public, private, and philanthropy. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ballard.
So I just want to thank you all for, for putting this together to make sure that, you know, in the future, we are as resilient as possible and that government is able to connect as well as possible with, with nonprofit partners and others who want and need to provide services to, to members of our, our community in the wake of tragic events like storms. So thank you. I know it, I know it's been a, a big task, but not only for launching this, but for creating a plan to ensure that it's going to last and be sustainable, and that it's not just, you know, doing all this work to put it together only to have it dwindle and fall apart. So I, I appreciate the forward thinking very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? No? Open this up to public comment. Seeing none, I will close public comment. And I have a motion by Commissioner McCann, seconded by Commissioner Bearden. Commissioner Phelps, how do you vote?
Yes.
And that is approved 6-2-0 with Commissioner Siddiq absent. Thank you all very much. All right, we're going to take a, we're going to take a 10-minute break till 10:45. We come back, we only have three items left, so we'll bang them all out. All right. We are back for our last three items of the day. We have two reports and a Commissioner agenda item. We will start with Community Veterans Services, item number 66, Systems Advocate Program Annual Report.
Good morning Commissioners. My name is Kristi Hagan, Children's Services Coordinator. I'm here just to present Nathan Scott, who will be providing the presentation. He's the Child and Family Wellbeing System Coordinator.
All right. Good morning Commissioners. Check it still morning. Yes, it is. County Attorney, County Administrator, thank you for having me this morning. I'm Nathan Scott with the Florida Department of Health, and, uh, yes, the title is super long, Child and Family Wellbeing System Coordinator. Just think of that if you haven't heard me talk, uh, before, as I'm the bridge between the community and our child welfare system, foster care system. So, today I'm just gonna provide an annual update to give you a status on where we're at in terms of children and families, kind of on those at-risk families, just to, um, give you some status updates. And we're gonna start today with the major updates. You see here I have high acuity, high needs youth. We will talk about that. I also was gonna talk to you about proposed DCF funding model, because it was gonna impact our, our local system, uh, pretty substantially, but that has been taken off the table since the legislature, situation that's going on in Tallahassee. We will not talk about that today, which is good for us. Um, so anyway, uh, the one, the major issue I'm gonna talk to you about today, um, is really these high acuity, high needs youth. I've talked to you about this for a couple of years in a row now. Those of you who are, have been intimately involved in the system, um, know that we've, we've historically have had some of these youth, uh, in care, but, but today, and again, as of last year, you know, it continues to increase. So I'm gonna give you a little background on that, the prevalence, and what the outcomes are, and kind of some of the things we're trying to do, um, locally to tackle this. So, when I'm talking about high acuity and high needs youth, I'm talking about youth with highly acute behavioral health needs, and/or juvenile justice-involved, uh, youth that are entering out-of-home care, um, through what we colloquially call a lockout, or what you would consider a custody relinquishment, uh, and what legally we, we term as an abandonment. So, these are kids who have substantial behavioral health issues, um, where, you know, they're violent, there could be sexual assault on younger siblings. Some are significantly developmentally delayed and violent. Um, and so, these are parents, when these kids are getting bake racked or arrested, that they're saying, "I am not gonna pick up the child from these facilities. They need to go into foster care because I can no longer look for services or care for them." So, they've exhausted the ability to find the services on their own out in the community. Um, and so, post-COVID, this population in our, uh, area has grown by over 400%, okay? Um, this is a big deal, and, and we'll get to why. Uh, one of the other things I wanted to point out is that greater than 70% of these kids that are coming into our local system are post-adoption teenagers. So, they have been adopted in the past, and now they are being re-entering the system, not for abuse or neglect this time, but because the family is abandoning them to the, to the child welfare system. What we know, uh, for these, these kids through some epidemiological studies is that their outcomes get worse. We looked at the, all, all the kids that have come in to our attention since 2014, um, in this situation, and we had our epidemiology department at DOH look at the outcomes for these kids, and their outcomes do get worse when they come into care, so they actually end up with more bake racks, more arrests, less likely to take their psychotropic medications. These children, they'll bounce between DJJ and the Department of Children and Families, so they'll get arrested and go to the Jack, and then come back, and then go back into a group home, usually a different group home, get arrested, go back. So, they're in and out, and in and out, so effectively never getting the services that they actually need. Um, again, they cha, they obtain more charges and bake racks along the way, significantly more than the, the kids who are not, uh, what we call lockouts, and those children who are prescribed psychotropic medication in this particular situation, take them less or not at all. Um, and this is almost the entire population minus maybe one or two kids that we have in residential group care. It's a big deal, and we'll talk about that when we talk about costs. So, uh, the total number, when I say that increase of 400%, the total number at the time I created this PowerPoint was about 56 youth. Doesn't sound like a lot, but you're gonna see why that's a lot. Um, it's 17% of the entire out-of-home care population, these 56 youth, um, and it's 70% of the out-of-home care cost per day, right? 17% in out-of-home care, 70%. To me, that's a, that's a big issue, not only in terms of the nut, the cost, the dollar amount, but that means that the other 83% of kids that are in care for abuse or neglect, we only have 30% of the out-of-home care budget to, to manage for those kids. So, it's a 53% increase in our out-of-home care costs since 2020. That went from 6.7 million to 30.9, which is an average increase of about 1.1 million per child, uh, in residential. Um, the daily cost for those 54 youth is $14,245.54 per child. Uh, or actually, that shouldn't be per child, that's total per, for all 54, uh, across the, the, the daily cost. And there'll be a, a slide here later on that shows you the comparison between traditional foster care, like a family foster home and residential care. But of course, I don't have to tell you guys, the societal cost is immense. Um, unfortunately, most of these kids that come in, most of these 54 kids, if not all of them, will age out of foster care. They come in very late, usually 16, 15. The family basically expects the system to repair or fix the children before they'll be willing to take those children back into their care, um, and, because they're, they're scared. They, they feel like they're, the younger kids in the home are at risk, themselves have been assaulted. Uh, there might even be a no-contact order between that youth and their family. Um, and so, they, they will typically age out of foster care, and, uh, if you don't know, aging out of foster care produces some significantly poor outcomes. 16% of youth who were in foster care at age 17 surveyed at age 21 have been incarcerated in the last two years. Uh, after reaching the age of 18, 20% of the children who were in foster care become instantly homeless. Um, every one out of two foster kids who age out of the system will have some form of gainful employment, uh, by the age of 24, so, on, only about 50% will be employed. There's less than a 3% chance for children who age out to earn a college degree at any point in their life, and seven out of 10 girls who age out of the foster care system will become pregnant before the age of 21. So, what we don't want to see happen are for kids to age out of foster care, right? Um, those are some national statistics from the KC Family Programs. Um, so, obviously, we have some work to do, and so, we, uh, and I should say, this is a national issue. This is not just happening here in Manatee. It's happening in our, across our circuit, it's happening across the state, and it's happening across the nation, which, and there's some reports that I can point you to, um, that, that show, uh, they're very recent through January on, on this. This is just a growing issue across the country. So, we said locally, well, we have to get together and figure out, first of all, how do we prevent youth and families from getting into crises in the first place, right? How do we prevent families from feeling like, "I have to give my child up to a system because I can't navigate the bureaucracy of finding mental health or behavioral health treatment for my kid"? So, how do we prevent that? How do we go really far upstream? Because I, I don't know about you, but I'm thinking of the 15-year-old who's stealing their 17th car and maybe has 36 arrests. That's a real example, by the way. It didn't just start at 15-years-old, it had to start earlier. And did we miss signs? How can we recognize those signs? How can we encourage teachers? How can we make sure services are there? How can we get people to ask for help? Additionally, what do we do with the 54 kids, 56 kids, 57 kids, however many we have right now? What do we do with, with them right now? Get them back into the community where we can get services safely into homes. Doesn't have to be their, the family, it could be your friend, a coach, whoever. How can we get them safely into communities and out of residential care? And how can we help the staff? Because unfortunately, our caseworkers are being assaulted, uh, at times, they're having their cars stolen, property destruction, you name it. Um, and so, they didn't sign up for that. Um, so, how do we help them as well? So, from April to September of last year, we came together as a community, um, through the Family Safety Alliance. To, it was about 160 different people from multiple organizations across all three counties to come together and really just throw the spaghetti at the wall, and no idea is a bad idea. Brainstorm, how can we impact these, these kids in those two categories, prevention and intervention? So, we generated 250 unique ideas, which is way too many things for us to do at once, so we kind of rolled that into 39 thematic strategies and voted to pick our top strategies and priorities that you see here. Um, some of these may look familiar to you, some of them not, but you can see in both workgroups, the top three things that we, as a community, decided were our priorities, were High Fidelity Wraparound, which is an evidence-based practice developed specifically for this, this population of youth. We actually, at the time we did this last year, did not have any High Fidelity Wraparound teams in our circuit. We had one High Fidelity Wraparound person trained, and so, uh, we wanted to beef that up, build capacity in High Fidelity Wraparound to really try to reduce the number of kids coming in with the high behavioral health, uh, issues, and also help us to plan on getting them back out of the system. So, happy to report that today, since we've done these workgroups, we do have one High Fidelity Wraparound team that's funded, that serves our younger population. We're working on putting, we have a few more people trained now in High Fidelity Wraparound to kind of develop a hybrid, community-based High Fidelity Wraparound team in Manatee County that will, uh, kind of partner with our delinquency court system, uh, and we're working on training and building capacity for others. Number two was increased peer support, so we're looking, we're talking about youth peers who, kind of think of those young adults who, I, I think this is great, uh, again, this year to follow on the footsteps of the proclamation for treatment courts, and you can see the power of treatment courts and the power of folks who've experienced those lived experiences, working with, with folks that are currently experiencing them. We need to expand that, is what our community is saying, across age groups and across systems. So, how can we find those young adults who've had delinquency issues to connect them with kids who are currently experiencing those things? What about families who've tried to navigate systems before and have been successful? Uh, how can we connect them with families now to kind of help them navigate the bureaucracy? The other thing we were looking at in both workgroups was a drop-in center, or crisis respite, which we don't have currently in our circuit, either of those two things. So, we are working, uh, on those, um, that, that priority, which I'll talk about in just a second. And then, in the prevention priority, we've talked about the need for universal behavioral health screening as early as possible. We do think, and we know, a lot of these kids are, uh, non-undiagnosed or, or late diagnosis of fetal alcohol spectrum disorder, or maybe substance exposure in utero. As you saw, greater than 70% of these kids were adopted at the time of the lockout, so what happened to them while they were, uh, in utero? So, we really need to screen kids as early as possible for any behavioral health issues so that we can intervene as early as possible. Uh, and finally, in the prevention, uh, category, you'll see filling the gap between crisis and response. And all that means is, let's say I'm in crisis, and I need help, and I make a phone call, and someone says, "Okay, well, will the CAT team or some crisis team, uh, will come out and, and intervene?", but there's a six-week waiting list. That, I don't know about y'all, but crisis in six weeks doesn't, doesn't add up, so what can we do in the middle? And the waiting list isn't anybody's fault, the waiting list is a capacity and funding issue, um, but it's really, what can we do in that wait, that gap? Can we intervene somehow and connect with that family to provide additional resources to make sure that they're still engaged by the time the resource becomes available? Uh, and finally, in the intervention and downstream category, you'll see, uh, we wanted to look at innovative and individualized safety planning, again, to try to work with families or, or other community members who are willing to take these youth back out of residential care. How would, how can we make them feel safe to do so? So, the current work in all of this, uh, locally, is that we embarked on some in-depth technical assistance with the National Center for Substance Abuse and Child Welfare, which is really about, uh, early, universal behavioral health screening, and we're talking prenatal. We're talking, how do we get pregnant moms who are using substances or alcohol to overcome the stigma and the judgment they feel about going to get prenatal care, to go get, and get the prenatal care, because that's where we can intervene and potentially help them find treatment, um, and also hopefully have a, a baby who's born negative for substances. Um, it's also about, uh, cross-systems training, uh, in terms of universal, early behavioral health screening. Um, we are in talks with a provider in Hillsborough County that does crisis respite for Hillsborough, Pasco, and Pinellas County. Um, so, we're working on that. We're waiting on some, some budget information to see if we can pilot something like that in Manatee County. Um, we also are in the process of developing a foster care prototype activation task force. I did not come up with that name, but, because I know it's long and complicated, but basically, we have some, uh, private funders who are interested in helping us with some of these strategies, and this particular donor is interested in that gap between crisis and response, so we're working with that person and one of our foundations to s, see what kind of prototype we can develop in that space. And then we've, for the other priorities we've developed, we've tried to find our champions in the community who are subject matter experts in some of this, to really increase the capacity for High Fidelity Wraparound, increase the behavioral health screenings, uh, out in the community, increase peer support. Uh, how can we help employers who wanna hire peers but don't really know what that means or don't know how? How can we help them maybe create a FAQ or something to help increase peer support in the community? And integrated safety planning, um, that's high quality. So, so those are the things we're working on currently. Um, the other thing I'll mention just before I move on to, to prevention and diversion and start giving you some numbers of what's happening in the county, is if we look at the cost savings that a High Fidelity Wraparound team could bring in terms of this population, I'll say Miami-Dade County, uh, their High Fidelity Wraparound team reduced inpatient psychiatric and residential care and saved them $1.5 million. In Jacksonville, their High Fidelity Wraparound team, uh, was an 82% reduction in bake racks, showcasing wraparound's effectiveness in preventing the mental health crisis. And if you look at just the, the low-end cost of foster care per child, it's about $60,000 annually. A High Fidelity Wraparound team costs $20,000 annually, so you can save, potentially save $40,000 even from that low end of foster care, not to mention a SIP placement that can cost $863 plus a day. So, in terms of prevention and diversion, we're gonna shift. That's our major issue. Um, that's what we're dealing with now. Um, so, I'm sure you, you have a lot to ponder and a lot to think about there, but I wanna also give you guys the, the, the recent data on what we're doing locally in terms of prevention and then in terms of out-of-home care. So, uh, just, just, uh, in terms of child fatality prevention, uh, what you'll see here are the, the child fatalities that were actually called into the, the Florida Abuse Hotline. In Manatee County, because of retired Major Shingle Decker, we, we call in almost every child death that, so the hotline can record that, and that, that we have a record of that, and we can look at ways that we can prevent that. That doesn't happen in every county, so that's a good, uh, practice for us to have, because now we, we can tell you, "Why are children dying in Manatee County?" And it's primarily because of drownings, um, and that's probably not a surprise to you guys. Um, and so, just, just to put out there that we do have resources for drowning prevention that are free, that we can, we can access to continue to educate the community and, and our rentals about the, the need for drowning prevention. Second highest cause is sleep-related, um, and you guys are making amazing progress, um, with the leadership of the Children's Services Advisory Board, and again, Major Shingle Decker, retired Major Shingle Decker, with your Sleep Baby Safety Safely Initiative. And finally, the vehicle accidents are, are a big deal for some of the, the deaths in Manatee County. Um, in terms of child welfare prevention, um, this is, this is for prevention after a call, a hotline call has already been generated, so someone already has a concern that a child is being abused or neglected. We really would love to see prevention, that, as much prevention before that hotline call is possible, but when a hotline call is generated, what you see here is that, um, we serve a lot of kids in the prevention, uh, world through Safe Children Coalition. Uh, in fact, we serve 10 times as many kids over the last three or four fiscal years in prevention than we did removals, uh, which is excellent. That's where we wanna see our resources, um, put into. It's, it's cheaper, it's more effective, you get better outcomes, and about 99% of the kids served in prevention don't enter out-of-home care. Um, so, it's really giving the resources to the family while they're still in home and in the community. So, this just shows you the number of children. Um, I developed this PowerPoint and had, through March of this fiscal year, you see almost 2,000 kids served, um, over time. You can see a drop. I'll explain that in a second, it's directly related to the drop in hotline calls and the drop in, in, um, child welfare ca, cases in general. Um, but I think you, we're on track to be right around 2,000 children and youth served through the, the Emergency Response Assessment Team. Youth Prevention Services is school-based counseling for these kids, um, so you can see, uh, 246 kids served through March, uh, of this fiscal year, through that program. Uh, we also have the Child and Parent Together Always Program. This is, this is the program that's directly related to that in-depth technical assistance that I was talking about earlier, so this program primarily focuses on pregnant women who use substances and their children from birth to one year. Uh, they served 93 moms this year through March. Um, you can see, they've served over 100 the past, uh, three fiscal years. And so, the, the great thing about this is that the majority of these moms, the vast majority, give birth to babies who are not positive for substances at the time of the birth. Uh, almost all of these moms that go through the whole program get to keep their babies when the babies are born, so this program is, is key and excellent to really intervene at a, the, the earliest possible point, right? The birth event, and, and prenatally. The birth event and prenatally. This particular program, we were notified by the department that locally, and it's across the state, that that CAPTA program, that CAPTA funding, it's federal funding, has been cut, at least for now. So this program is looking for some additional ways to continue to operate, but it's doing some great work. And through the IDTA, the in-depth technical assistance, I anticipate that that team would get more referrals. And then we finally have the Youth Intervention Services, which is a newer program for the kids that we just talked about. This is specifically designed for 10- to 17-year-olds at risk of these really high acuity behavioral health needs available for DJJ and the school district to refer to. And so far through this year, we've served 118 youth just in Manatee County. So in terms of what happens when prevention doesn't happen, can't happen, or doesn't work, this is just a real quick overview of what's going on in terms of hotline reports, investigations, and protective supervision in Manatee County compared to last fiscal year. So what I think is interesting here that I'll point, because you guys can see the numbers, but what I'll point out is the removals, and that's the reason that I bolded that. What you're going to see in some graphs here very shortly is that our removal rate across the state, but definitely in our circuit as well, and this is a national trend also, has dramatically decreased over the last couple of years, which is good news. We're serving more families in home instead of having to remove them. But for Manatee County this fiscal year, we still are down in comparison to a few years ago, but we're starting to trend back up. And as you can see right there in that removal bold, is that 6.5% of the hotline call investigations resulted in removal versus 3.6 last fiscal year. Where are kids coming into care? This may not surprise you. This is just a heat map of our whole circuit. It's the 41301 corridor. That one way out there and on the bottom right is Arcadia, so that's our DeSoto removals. Then you have some up there, down in Northport, of course, and then some up there in the parish area that's out there on the other side of 75, on the east side, but primarily 41301 corridor for both Sarasota and Manatee County. The ZIP codes are on the side of this slide for you to reference as well. But this, I think, gives you a great visual of the, something that's concerning to me is, here are your removals by county, and you see 19 removals out in DeSoto, 41 in Sarasota, and 184 removals in Manatee County. It's over 70% of the removals are taking place this fiscal year in Manatee County. So my question is why? What's happening in Manatee County that is causing us to have to remove that many kids? Because historically, Manatee County is our higher removal county of the circuit, but it's usually maybe double of Sarasota, not 70%. So something's definitely happening that we got to, we need to put our finger on the pulse there of why those removal rates are so high in Manatee County. And so that's why I added this slide, so you could see the visual, I think, really tells a story, that we got something going on here that we don't have in our other two counties. DeSoto is a much different county than our other two counties, than Manatee and Sarasota, so it usually differs in terms of numbers and removals. But yeah, we're working on trying to figure out why that is. This is a, the next few slides are just some visuals on what's been happening over time in terms of removals, but that red line represents Manatee, so you can see that it definitely picked up July of '24 in terms of removals and kind of dips every so often, but really spiked up starting in July of '24. So something started happening right there in July, that, and July and August were, that we should be looking at to see if we can put our finger on that. But you can see this is over time since 2018, that the number of children sheltered per month continues to decrease, even in Manatee County, even though there is the increase right now. You had 228 removals back in 2018, but in 2025, at the time, this was like February and Mar, January and February data, you had 52. So it's continuing to go down, but still, again, we need to determine why is Manatee so high? And a final visual on the entries into out-of-home care, this takes into account your entries, your exits, and the total population in out-of-home care, so you can see that dramatic decrease over time. And you can also kind of get a visual of the entries and exits. But again, we need to find out why are the kids being removed from Manatee County at such a high rate? So again, the biggest system issue, to recap, for out-of-home care is the high acuity, high needs youth, but it doesn't make up the 180 number of removal. But again, 75.4% of removals in Circuit 12 are in Manatee County. And when we talk about where do these kids go, they go primarily to relatives and non-relatives. However, when they need to go to foster care, we have 120 beds available in Manatee County, 274 in the circuit, continue to have six medical beds total for the whole circuit for medical needs. You have about 26 foster homes in Manatee County. That Level 1 licensed relatives, the reason there's not a number in Manatee County is because I only have the circuit numbers, so we have 146 relatives that are licensed to take care of their grandkid or niece or nephew. And then you have 47 kids in group care with, and 69 kids in group care total. So Manatee also not only makes up the higher removals, you make up the most kids in residential group care. So you have the highest number of lockouts in addition to the highest number of removals. This, for our budget, folks, this is where I got the numbers in terms of the daily cost and also how many percentage of those kids are in out-of-home care. So again, just to reiterate, a different way of looking at the numbers is the low number of youth that are in this situation, this lockout situation. It's 17% of our out-of-home care population that you see there residential, 54 kids, but a high cost, 74%, $30.9 million for those 54 kids. In terms of where do kids go once they exit the system, primarily it's reunification. We want to get kids home back to their parents in a safe way, so it's, you can see the numbers here of how many kids were reunified. More kids this fiscal year are being closed permanent guardianship in Manatee, so relative, non-relative. You had 34 kids adopted, and you had five kids age out. So in comparison to last fiscal year, you know, you're below, well below on reunifications. I don't know if we'll meet that many reunifications or even adoptions this year based on the numbers, but the good news is you might not have as many kids age out. 95% of kids so far this fiscal year exit to a permanent home, so 5% of those kids are age out. Average length of stay in out-of-home care is 26.51 months, so a little over two years. And another thing I wanted to point out to you, and that shows you that increase in removals and how that impacts the system, is the net entries. Last year, when we take entries and exits into consideration, you had 184 youth that entered, but you exited 118. Or, excuse me, last year you had 134 enter, and you exited 318. So you had a net decrease in out-of-home care in Manatee County of 184 kids, whereas this year through March, you're on track with a net increase of 66 children. So you have less exits than you do entries. Typically, when we look at that from a system perspective, this is considered the health of your system, and when you start to see that fishtail and you're exiting less kids than are entering, then that's when caseloads start to go up, that's when the stress on the system starts to begin. So that's another pressure point that we have to keep our eye on there in terms of net entries. For performance, in terms of permanency, this is the performance for your child welfare agency, the Safe Children Coalition, in terms of how many kids are we getting home within 12 months, which is a federal target. And if we can't do that, how many do we get home within the next 12, et cetera? And how many do not re-enter care? So you can see across the state, we're actually doing better than the state at 31.92, getting home within 12, but we're still below the federal target and the state target of 35.2, as is the rest of the state. So we have some work to do to getting the kids into permanent housing, you know, situation within the 12 months of their removal. And then we're a little below where we should be in terms of kids not coming back into care. We're at 90.96. We're below statewide average, so we have some work to do there, but we need to be at 94.4% do not re-enter care once they go home. I did want to provide you just a quick update on some juvenile justice. Unfortunately, when I was putting the PowerPoint together, I recognized, and I just wanted to point out to you, that most of their dashboards have not been updated since September of 2023. And so this was the only updated dashboard that I could find information for to show you what's happening in our juvenile justice system. And so in terms of your pre-arrest delinquency citations, Manatee does an excellent job, I have to say. When you look at the rest of the state, even our other circuit partners, we issue civil citations on those first offenses at a really good rate, and we get a good return on investment for the programs with teen court and different things. So Manatee's an excellent. I can't tell you anything else about DJJ currently, but in this, in terms of this, we're doing a great job. Also, I like to always tell you guys about our workforce, considering we have a high turnover rate, but the good news that you can see here is that our caseloads are super low in terms of historic and in terms of what the Child Welfare League of America recommends. So in Manatee, that line that says LSF, that's Lutheran Services Florida, that's your case management organization here in Manatee County. You're at 11.67 kids per case manager, or 11.83, sorry, to the far right, 11.83, still below the 12 kids that's recommended by Child Welfare League of America. So that's manageable. That's really good. But again, with that net entry going up, that could start to increase. So we've got to keep our eye on that, but overall, caseloads look great. I would tell you about CPI, case, or excuse me, Child Protective Investigations, but again, DCF has not provided a Child Welfare Key Indicator Report since the last time I presented to you, so that they don't, I don't have an update on that since October of 2023. And the last little piece that I'd like to provide to you is, again, just give you an update on our Parents for Parents program. You guys have heard me talk about this before, some of you. And this is just an update because we did expand to Manatee County since the last time that I talked with you. So I just wanted to, and in the spirit of our proclamation for treatment courts this morning, I think peer support's a great way to end this, is Parents for Parents, again, is one of those peer support programs that's specific to the child welfare system. It's giving hope to the families that reunification is possible, so they offer classes, tips, and resources, support groups, et cetera, to those families that are coming into the dependency court system. And it's completely driven and led and staffed by parent partners, who are parents who have experience with the child welfare system, so their kids have been removed in the past, they have gotten their kids reunified, and now they're providing peer support to the parents who are currently coming into the system. There's three components to this program, and they engage the shelter, they engage the parent at the shelter hearing, they do a class with the parent that tells them all about the system that they've just found themselves involved with, who's who, what to expect, why visitation's important, how to dress for court, why you should turn your camera off during a court hearing if you're smoking a cigarette, all of those important things, they try to explain to the parents so that they know, you know, how to successfully navigate the system, and then they provide ongoing peer support. So we started in Manatee, October 2024. We do have a full-time parent partner here in Manatee. Because of the higher removals, it's not enough, so the capacity is an issue, but we've served 97 parents just this year since January through March. 16 of those 97 were fathers, 32 parents participated in the dependency 101 class, and this one full-time parent partner has completed 470 unique individual mentoring sessions, 49 of those with fathers. And I put the fathers info there because historically, we've done a really bad job at engaging fathers, so we're trying to really focus on how can we do a better job there. We did have a program evaluation on this particular program, on Parents for Parents, that was funded by the Florida Institute for Child Welfare and conducted by the University of South Florida. This is in your packet, so I won't take too much time, but the qualitative results demonstrated from the folks that they interviewed, support and trust, long-term engagement, peer support, system navigation. I put quotes in here so that you guys could read, and when I moved that quote, it uncrossed out the curse words, so I apologize about that, but this is a direct quote, as you can tell, from a parent. So throughout this slide, you'll see some of the quotes that are here, and it's difficult for me even to read, so I can forward you a copy of this. I think some of you might have seen it in terms of the evaluation. One thing we see here is every county needs a Parents for Parents program, so is one of our parents. But all, throughout the evaluation, you see the parents are saying that they feel supported and feel that the program is valuable. But in terms of quantitative results, what we definitely see is that if the parents take the dependency 101 class, this slide's showing you that from post, pre-test to post-test, they actually, after the class, feel much more hopeful, much better about their ability to impact the system, much more trust in the child welfare system. And those parents who complete the full Parents for Parents program are actually reunified 114 days sooner than parents who don't involve themselves in the program at all. And even if they receive just partial Parents for Parents, so they don't want to do the mentoring, but just want to do the class, they still are reunified at a sooner rate than those parents who didn't participate at all. And in terms of cost savings for Parents for Parents, based on these numbers, we could save $2,693 per child whose parent receives full Parents for Parents because of the 114 days less. So hypothetically, we've had 81 moms enter child welfare in Manatee County from January through March. Let's say they all only have one kid, that'd be a minimum of one child, and that child goes into regular foster care. If all of that happened, then the potential cost savings, if that parent got full P for P in Manatee County, could be $218,133 for those 81 children. So P for P has the potential of paying for itself. It's not that expensive of a program, so we feel like the ROI is pretty high. And finally, just to give you an example, if the parent is engaged in mentoring, as you can see on this right-hand bar graph, they are reunified 72% of the time versus only 27% if they do not engage in the mentoring with the peers. So we're really pleased with these results, and so we're hoping to expand and get more parent partners in Manatee County so we can really, you know, increase our capacity. But other than that, I tried to get through that pretty rapidly. I know it's a lot of information. So I'll take questions, thoughts?
Commissioner Ballard.
Thank you. Nathan, thank you so much for all of the information, and, you know, just from the perspective of the data, we really have come so far in so, in so many ways, from, you know, the way that things were five, six, seven years ago with the, with the level of children that we actually were serving in the system. You know, we had times where we were sheltering hundreds of kids in a single month. You know, I had days where I would have five or eight shelters in one, in one day, which could be up to, you know, 20 kids coming into care in just one day. And 11.83 for caseloads for our case managers is amazing, and I'm sure is doing a lot for retention, because again, there was a time when our case managers were probably double that for their caseloads. So that's very exciting. I absolutely am happy to sing the praises of the Parents for Parents program every time possible. That program, we are funding through Children's Services Advisory Board. I think it's an excellent program, and it really teaches parents on the front end with the dependency 101, what is the system? How do I get through the system? Who are the players? And who, how does all of this work? Because when parents come into the system for the first time, a lot of times, they're really angry, they're very confused, they have no idea who's who, what's what, or even where to go and kind of where to start. So I think that that has, that's been a huge step in the right direction, and just offering that kind of neutral party of someone who's been through it before, I think it's making a real difference. When it comes to prevention and diversion, I wanted to mention kind of a domino effect that this board has had. So a couple of years ago, our board took our drug court funding from grant funding through the Public Safety Coordinating Council and moved that into our regular budget. That opened up those Public Safety Coordinating Council grant funds for other purposes. Now, for the first time, we're able to fund a teen behavioral healthcare court. So we're dealing with some of these difficult cases where potentially we can keep some of these kids who are going to be super high acuity, super high need, super high cost. Hopefully, we're catching them a little bit on the front end, holding those families together. And so just by, two years ago, funding drug court, we opened up those grant funds to try something unique, to try to do something different, which hopefully is going to keep some of these kids out of foster care. Again, when it comes to kind of the domino effects, what we're doing now, where we're going to have the Salvation Army Shelter that's going to serve 26 families, again, potentially keeping families together, keeping kids out of foster care, and preventing these kind of high acuity things in the future. So the things that we're doing today are going to have domino effects on the child welfare system, as well as just on our community as a whole and the health of our community as a whole. So I wanted to add one more thing that we're doing, the program with Helping Up Mission. I just want to really highlight, for the prevention and diversion side of things, I really want to make sure that we are connecting those women who have young children or who are pregnant with the availability of that program, because sometimes we, I want to make sure that link is being made between ERAT and these women, because we could stand to keep these kids out of foster care, to really catch some of those high acuity problems on the very front end and prevent a lot of really bad things. So I'm going to stop there, because I could talk all day about this. Thank you.
I see no one else on the board, but everything Commissioner Ballard said sounded great. But everything Commissioner Ballard said sounded great. That's the advantage of having a diverse board with interests that we can focus on. Because I have almost no idea what she said. But I know she knows what she said, and that's going to help this community. So thank you, and thank you.
Thank you.
I will open this up to public comment.
For the record, Glenn Gaddfi, Gibellina, we live in the greatest country in the world. We probably live in one of the most affluent areas in the state. This is unacceptable. This is an uphill battle. You know, there are programs that work out there. I'm big on not reinventing the wheel. Just take some of the best practices that are out there. And being in the recovery community, I could tell you, I've talked to moms and dads. And their kids, if they're whacked out, they give up. They just say, I've had enough. I'm burnt out. I know moms that have Baker Act their kids 20 times. And now they've aged out, and there's nowhere for them to go. It's a travesty that we even have in this conversation today. Early intervention, you know, the kids that don't get help, they're just going to be in drug court down the road. So why don't we just try to help them before they get to that point? The young adults that age out, they're done. They, you know, they can't hold a job. They can't put two sentences together. And they are thrown out there for market rate rent and jobs, and they're not available. I think for that segment, there should be halfway houses with mentors in them. Because once you hit 18, the funding stops for foster care. They're considered an adult. But there are no way, shape or form that an adult in a mental or even a physical capacity. So that's the area I think we need to focus. Or they're just going to wind up in jail, or dead, or drug court if they're lucky. So funding is a big thing. And I'm looking at these numbers, you know, $30 million a year, that's $8,000 a month. We need to re-divert those funds to programs like we just heard. And I think we would get a better handle on this. It's unacceptable. You know, you look at PTSD from our vets, our elderly, 20% are on the edge of being homeless. And our children, that's the worst. You know, I think we need a more collaborative effort. Nobody wants to talk about it. I think when your kid goes to school, there should be a psychological evaluation, a physical evaluation. Talk to the parents. You got any problems? Because once you have the problems, it's already too late for that conversation, right? We need to have the conversation earlier. And the ones that have already gone through that are really a lost cause, they need help. They need intensive wraparound services that I think these guys got to handle and moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Any other public comments? Oh, you're coming up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Cecilia Haig. I work, I'm a Chief Strategy and Innovation Officer for an organization.
You're good.
Okay, sorry. For an organization called Thompson. We're actually a southern organization that does nothing but mental health and behavioral health. Why I bring that up? I live down the street in Bradenton. And one of the things Nathan said could not be more reiterated, which is these high acuity youth, this is a nationwide epidemic. We have a lot of resources, however, just in the South. Why it matters to me as someone who lives here and also works in the space is because these are our future workforce. And although I agree that many of them are coming in with some serious challenges, we are also seeing lots of programs that are in fact turning that tide, right? So when you're talking about 17, 18, 19-year-olds, who are our future tradesmen, who are our future public service work members, they're interested in that. And I can speak for Thompson specifically, but many of our areas, South Carolina is one that comes to mind, that out of response of a state level, started at a county, moved into a state level suit, have put together some pretty cool pilots that, where we are now serving high acuity youth in all of South Carolina and really seeing an incredible change in their stability numbers. Why that should matter to you guys as you're working and just looking at these challenges, I would say, to your point about longevity, we want to get in and address issues on the early prevention side. But taking action now, whether that's continuing this conversation, continuing to look at, how do we look at the resources that live in Manatee County to support Manatee County? It will only have multiplied benefits. I have seen, just in our neighbor Hillsborough, we do some work in Hillsborough, specifically with high acuity youth. We've seen in the last year, a good 20% of those kids have jobs and hold them down. And that's a positive for those employers as much as it is for the actual community itself. So I'm here to help. Nathan knows that we've connected recently. But I want to commend you guys for listening to this because this is a thing that, as an employer, I think about. This is my workforce. This is the growth of my workforce. And one affects the bunch, right? They're super connected. So anything that you're doing here today and what you do from here is really going to have an entire impact on that group and that generation. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, no one's on the phone. I will close public comment. Nobody's on the board. There is no action to be taken. So thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, we got two items left. One report, one Commissioner Gen item. We're going to item number 67. Light up Manatee Program Status Update and Roadway Lighting Policy Discussion.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to have a few comments before the team gets up here. This has been an initiative of ours, and I appreciate the board's support on this when we first brought this forward, how to light up Manatee. We, you know, we found out that Manatee was pretty much dark. And we've gone through several areas now, District 2, District 3, and we're into District 4. But this is a great program. It's worked, it's working very well. I have to thank our trade partners with this, FPL and Streetleaf, for their assistance also in this program. Our staff has done a great job in getting this program moving forward. I always thank our staff for all the hard work they've done with Light Up Manatee. And I'll let Clark take it over.
Thank you, Chairman Commissioners, and thank you, Commissioner Ron, for the introduction. As he stated, this is an update on the Light Up Manatee Initiative. I've got two staff with me here today. Chris DeCosta, he's a Senior Assessment Coordinator that's worked a lot with the neighborhood lighting. And Aaron Burkett is our Traffic Operations Division Manager. He's kind of all things lighting. And in the Light Up Manatee Initiative, has been looking at the major roadway lighting part of it. And I'll let them take it from here.
Thank you, sir. Morning Commissioners, County Administrator. I'm Christopher DeCosta. I'm your Senior Assessment Coordinator. Biggest thing, the biggest part of this whole project is getting lights to the public. Lighten it up. I know Commissioner Ron really stated that, and we've received a lot of positive feedback. Today, we're going to talk about the recap of the program, the current status, and obviously, the policy consideration acquiring new lighting. That's super important because we're actually receiving a lot of, let's say, like a lot of neighborhoods that want us to assume that responsibility. We're looking for feedback from you. The purpose and the scope, the biggest piece of that equation is the crime and the crash data. Mike Holt and our GIS analyst did a phenomenal job. The crash data was from 2017 to 2022. They made an overlay, and we were able to pinpoint hotspots throughout the county. Also, with the crime data, we used from 2020 to 2022, and we did the exact same thing. These are the areas that really need attention, and that's what we have done. Moving on, the program started on the 1st of October 2023. Obviously, our priorities were District 4, 2, and 3. However, it has expanded a little bit, and it's okay. You know, obviously, our crime and crash data definitely has set that tone. The MSBUs, thank you very much to you all. You actually have assumed that responsibility as a county, which actually has helped us as a community. We're using pre-existing lighting infrastructure when possible. That's super important, all right? That's what keeps the cost down. And we're going to talk about that here in a brief moment. Also, I want to point out, priority placement of intersections, cul-de-sacs, dead-end streets, and bus stops, super important. That's a really key incremental piece of this equation. A lot of people want the lights, 80%, but 20% really don't. So that's our split. A lot of people say, we want the lights, but I don't want it right outside my home. Well, we have an opportunity to help them with that, at no cost to the county nor the community. It's actually at FPL's cost. Through the Manatee website, we have the Light Up Manatee website. They actually can go on the website, and what they can do is actually order a light shield and direct that light down so it's not shining in their home. Super important, easy, quick, easy fix. More importantly, we've also had the ability recently to put on our website the opportunity for each of the citizens to show that, hey, we have a light out. We have a string of lights out. So they actually can report outages directly to FPL without going through the county. That will reduce the amount of 3-1-1 calls, and hopefully to your offices as well. I'm sure you might be receiving some phone calls. Right here is a great map of the entire project. What I want to point out to you is I know it's a lot of colors and a lot of stuff going on. Purple is your municipal service benefit units or your MSBUs that we incorporate into the program. White is the proposed areas. Obviously, red is the design phase, which is actually with FPL right now. Yellow is under construction with FPL. Currently, we have one crew out there working on the neighborhood section. FPL will be hiring another crew to work on your thoroughfares. Right now, we've been split with both of them. We've been doing a great job with FPL, getting a lot done for this past year, especially with three hurricanes hitting us. The next slide is only the neighborhoods. This particular slide right here is all your thoroughfares. Upper right-hand column is District 1 specifically. You've got Golf Course Road and Old Tampa. Those are really important. I know a couple of Commissioners previously mentioned that they really wanted these areas lit up. We rose to the occasion, and we reached out to PRECO, and we also got PRECO's involvement. The Light Up Manatee Initiative total roll-up. Here's some numbers, not to be a professional bean counter, but this will help you. FPL and PRECO is going to be hopefully installing 3,470 lights. However, solar lights, we're looking at 158, giving us a total amount of 3,628 lights for the project of the $3 million that you allocated. We have totally financed so far to date, 1,714 lights. Of that 1,714 lights, we achieved installation of 1,152. I'm going to give you the breakdown here momentarily. Starting budgets, as I said, you gave us $3 million. We broke it down from design and construction. We have spent to date $1.6 million. We have a remainder of $1.4 million for this particular project. What I want to point out is, I know Commissioner Ron said it a long time ago. We can have it cheap, right? Or we can have it fast. Well, we're trying to do our best to have it cheap and good quality. FPL does that for us. We actually got it down to $12.02 per unit, per light, as of today's date, which gives you $144 per year for one light. It's very commendable. Solar, so we can purchase or we can actually lease. Solar is a little bit more expensive, but much faster. So this is really important. We can use solar only in areas where FPL really struggles. As you see, annual cost for one light, solar, is $600. $50 a month for lease cost. Annual lease, I'm sorry, the lease agreement will be 20 years. The average will be about $12,000 per light. So it's definitely not cost-effective to do it that way. FPL is a great option. Moving on, this particular slide is directed to Commissioner Ron, and all of you will be having one. Commissioner Ron, I know that you will be happy to know that we have 703 lights dispersed in your community that we've identified. Of that 703 lights, we have already financed 468 of them. However, 192 have only been installed. And you're going to say, well, why? Well, the reason why is we're actually building you your infrastructure from the ground up. We can't use a lot of your existing infrastructure right now. However, there are some spots that we can. We have spent $716,000 in your community. Here's, pictures actually speak volumes. Here is a great picture of Duray Village, D4A1. D4 being the district, A1 is the grid. This is Duray Village, one of the shovel-ready areas that was going to be an MSBU. On the left-hand side, you see a white van. That white van, you can barely see. And I can tell you, I went out there in the evening, and it was really, really dark. Since FPL has actually put in the infrastructure there with concrete poles, if you notice the picture on the right, there's no overhead lines. Everything's bored underground, which is a hardened infrastructure, which means, as long as power's getting to those cables, we have lights. That's a positive. What I'd like to point out is our test bed area for solar. Commissioner Ron, you're the only district that we have as at this time that has solar in it. This particular area is D4A4 Phase 3, called Gateway Heights. On the left-hand side, you'll see Publix in the top corner. You'll also see on the left side, the solar light street. However, that whole dark area, FPL has started installation and started construction. On the right-hand side, you actually see a beautiful lit-up street. That is what the solar, that's what solar looks like. The challenge with solar in this particular area is the canopy. The canopy is definitely a struggle, besides finances. Moving on, Commissioner Ballard, this is all yours. I know you are, you're looking at your number, and you're saying, wow, you didn't spend much in my district. Well, the reason for that is because your existing infrastructure is wonderful. So hopefully, you're happy with that, ma'am. What I can tell you, though, is you have 760 proposed lights in your district. Of that 760, we've already purchased 381, but we've already executed 358. As you saw on Channel 7 News, the woman was very, very happy, right? She was happy. Well, I'm getting a lot of positive feedback, especially from your district. And I spent quite a bit of time with them. What I can tell you is that you are the least amount of money, but a lot of lights. So biggest bang for our buck, so thank you. This is a great example. I did not have the opportunity to get before pictures of Western New Washington. So you have New Washington and Western New Washington. Western New Washington was FPL-owned or territory. New Washington was PRECO-owned, which was a municipal service benefit unit, which was rolled into the program, as you know. As you see, it's very well lit up. Moving on, I know one of the Commissioners is not here today. However, this is the information for District 3. This is a hybrid. We've spent $452,000 on this particular district. However, they have the highest amount of lights getting put in, of 888 we've identified. Of the 888, we've spent, I'm sorry, we spent $452,000 on 598 lights. We've executed 335 of those. So between three hurricanes, I believe we've done very well overall. Here is a great example, Manatee Ave, D3C2 Phase 1. This was going to be a municipal service benefit unit as well. However, we had the opportunity to excel and get this put into the program. The purple light is your reference point on the picture on the left, the before. That's actually a citizen's property. We cannot change that purple light, unfortunately. However, the house behind it, or next to it, I should say, you can see in the picture on the right is well lit up in that area. Penny, any questions? I'll be followed by Mr. Aaron Burkett.
Where's District 5's lights?
I'm sorry, sir?
Where's District 5's lights?
So District 5 is right now, is not on the priority list. It did not make it due to the fact of the crime and crash data. Now, if you want to continue the project, we moved the dial up. I can show you where you could. Let me go back for you. Right here, if you move the dial up from the medium to the high range, and we go a couple of steps below, that will open up the doors for District 5, sir. couple of steps below, that will open up the doors for District 5, sir. Oops, I'm sorry, Aaron.
There you go.
There you go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it, Chris. For the record, Aaron Burkett, Traffic Operations Division Manager. Thank you for your time letting us come here today and give you an update on the program. Just to clarify what Chris was showing you on the, on that scale, that, those two scales were the crime and crash data and where we had that line drawn was the penetration range and which, where we focused our priorities at. So if we imagine moving that line up to our lower range of crash and crime rates, then it would open up more opportunity to provide more priority locations. But right now, most of our funding is targeted what we've already identified, so if we went further down that range, we'd probably be looking at asking for more money. So I'm going to be providing you just a brief update on where we're at with the thoroughfare part of the program. Chris has been focused on the neighborhoods and the local streets. My part of the, of the project has been focused on the major roads, collector roads, where we can put lighting. The thoroughfares, as Chris has been doing a terrific job getting a lot of lights installed, I've been kind of working in the background with FPL identifying priorities. And since the inception, this is, this is what I've been working on. We identified 22 priority project locations in four districts. Out of those 20, 22 locations, we are estimating 1,277 lights total. Five of the locations are complete, and I'll be showing you that in a minute, those locations, and those came with 267 lights installed. And then, right now, we have five locations in final design, and I'll be showing you a little more information on that. And like I said, since the inception, you know, the reason why we broke it up into local roads and thoroughfares, thoroughfares require a little bit more design to be involved in making sure that we're installing lights properly. With thoroughfares, we have standards that we have to adhere to for lighting distribution, uniformity, and illumination. So we had to work with FPL and their consultants to do photometric designs for each of these 22 locations. And so we set aside funding for that and we got all of those photometric designs done. And that was a lot, because when you look at designs for street lighting, you've got to look at pole locations, distances between the poles, the setback, the arm height, the arm length, the wattages, the distribution type. So there's a lot that goes into determining the design, the photometric design for each of these thoroughfares, so you have a uniform lighting design, okay, that meets our standards. And so each of these designs have to be reviewed and, for consistency and appropriateness. So obviously, each of the fixtures are going to be LED and powered by FPL solar farms. And to clarify, these maps that we're showing you here, these are actually screenshots of the Light Up Manatee website. So these maps are actually on the website. They're, they're interactive, so you can actually drill down into each of these locations, click on each of the roads or each of the communities, and get more information on each of the project locations. So this map shows you our next five locations that we're focused on. Three of the locations are in District 4 and the other location, the other two are in District 2. So District, the number-one location is 34th Street West. That's between Cortez Road and 53rd Avenue. Number two is 30th Street West, Cortez, between Cortez and 30, 53rd. And then, number three is 5th Street West, between Cortez and 53rd Avenue. The other two in District 2 are on 5th Street East. The south end is going to be between 57th Avenue and 63rd Avenue. And on the north end, it's between 30th Avenue and 301 Boulevard. So again, with the, choosing the priority locations for these thoroughfares, we let the crime and crash data steer us for the priorities. So that's where we were focused on. With thoroughfares, we're more focused on the, on the crash rates, but we also let the crime rates guide us on where we chose these priorities. So FPL's in final designs with these. We're hoping to see construction start within the next month or so. I'll let FPL's here, I'll let them talk more about that if, if you have questions on the schedule. This is kind of a roll-up of all the districts that we've been doing work in for the thoroughfares. District 4, you'll see at the top, we have seven priority project locations identified with 388 lights proposed. Three of those you saw are in final design stage. District 2, we have 11 project locations, 576 lights proposed. District 3, three projects, 114 lights, and District 1, 199 proposed lights. So a total of 1,277 lights. Again, the, the focus, the primary focus was District 4, of course, first and foremost, but, you know, we ended up with more project locations based upon the size of the roadway and how the crime and crash data pushed us in those directions. And this is a final picture of, this was one of the shovel-ready projects that we were able to do right from the get-go, which was in Sammaset. This is 30th Avenue East looking west of 9th Street East. Again, we didn't get before pictures. We are, we are working on doing more of that as we start these new projects, and we'll be sharing that with you when we come back and provide additional updates. One of the things that we wanted to, to bring to you today as well and just maybe get your feedback is potential changes to our policy. After we initiated this project, we developed a policy on how we execute the Light Up Manatee program and how we get these lights on the road. As Chris mentioned, we have been getting a few requests from HOAs that already have lighting accounts with FPNL. They've been asking if, if it's possible that we could take over these accounts. And it's one of those things, we want to be careful in how we proceed forward, because there's a lot of HOAs out there where the developers may have installed lighting when the community was initially developed and turned the lighting over to HOAs. But not all lighting is created equal. A lot of the lights that you see are standard lights on concrete poles, standard fixtures. They're, they're garnering the lower rates that FPL is charging, but there's also a lot of decorative stuff out there, semi-decorative out there that, that they may be paying a little bit more for on a monthly fee. So, and plus, there's HOAs out there that have their own lights, and these lights are installed on county right-of-way. So not an emergency right now, but something to consider in the future. Do we want to start thinking about taking on these lighting accounts that are owned by the HOA? So it's just something we want to propose. We did take on the MSBUs. That was something we did, but just a thought. And to wrap it up, this is, you know, this is, to kind of wrap everything up, this is where we're at today. Our total spend was 1.6 million right now, and that covers 1,714 lights. The total installed of the 1,714 is 1,152. We are projecting 3,200, 3,628 lights total under this $3 million that we currently funded. We have almost 1.4 million of that remaining, and we do project we will be able to get the remaining lights, the 1,914, for a total of 3,628. So I'm hoping we will come in under that. One of the benefits of doing lighting on thoroughfares, it's a little bit cheaper. You are able to capitalize on the existing infrastructure. Most of these thoroughfares have FPL poles out front in the right-of-way, so we'll be using a lot of those poles to install lights. So that not only keeps our construction costs down, but it also will speed up installation. So once, I anticipate once FPL finally gets to that final construction of, or initiating the construction on the thoroughfares, the, we'll be getting a lot more lights installed. That's it. That's the last slide, and I'm prepared to answer any questions you might have. I appreciate your time.
Thank you for a thorough presentation. I don't know who's, who's going to be able to answer my questions, but I'm going to have several for you guys. You stated that 80% are saying yes and 20%, 20% are saying no. Where are you guys gathering that data?
Yes, sir. We actually gather that data with Neighborhood Services, specifically through surveys.
Okay. How many surveys were, were pushed out?
As of right now, only two, sir.
Two surveys were pushed out to how many people?
I can tell you, I can only tell you the district itself, so District 2 specifically.
Okay. Well, I mean, if you're going to make those claims, I mean, I would say that we would need answers in regards to how you're backing up your claims that you're making.
Okay.
So you're saying that crime essentially will decrease. Is that a guarantee that's going to decrease, and by what percentage will it decrease?
That is a great question, Commissioner. I don't have that, that crystal ball, but I can tell you, I've received from the MSO specifically, a few officers, and they said they're, they're able to actually physically see the streets, they can see neighborhoods, they can see backs of homes. They're able to actually engage a little bit easier. That's all I can say.
Okay, but we don't never, we don't necessarily have the data that's saying crime actually decreases
No, sir.
By installing lights. Okay.
That is correct.
Because, I mean, that's, that's what I'm being told. The next question I have is that, solar lights. Why are we using solar lights?
Okay.
Opposed to utilizing, you know, the old way, the old-school way of doing things, putting up lights?
We're using solar lights in conjunction with areas that FPL cannot execute to their best of their ability, such as, you know, hard bedrock or, or something of that nature that they're maybe having a difficulty.
And how many solar lights are we expected to put in in all these districts?
Total of 158 maximum is where we're projected right now. Right now, we've only installed 21.
Okay. And within those solar lights, based on my understanding of this, we're not necessarily getting from FPL, we're getting them from an outside contractor. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
The other thing that I'm looking into regarding these lights is we're looking at a Chinese product. Is that correct?
There is, there is products made overseas, yes, sir.
Okay. And within that contract, that contract actually, they could increase, the reason why I'm asking about Chinese product is because we know what's going on here on a, on a, on a basis as far as tariffs go. And we saw that, within that contract, they could increase the price of those solar lights at any time. Am I correct on that?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. So what, what is the actual cost of these solar lights and how much have they increased our contract by?
So let me back up a little bit. Evan Piluchowski, Deputy County Administrator. So there was a slide here on the solar lights. It showed that it was about four times as expensive as a, an FPL light. There is no signed contract that we have, an exclusive contract with any other entity. We are working to limit the number of, of solar lights where it is more cost-effective to use our partners with FPL. But if there is a desire to have a competitive solicitation to purchase any or lease any of these solar lights going forward, we would certainly entertain that and work with procurement to get that on the street.
So what you're saying is that there was no essentially formal competitive bidding process within this program?
I believe it was a piggyback contract, sir.
Say that again?
I believe it was a, a piggyback contract.
Why did not, why did not this contract go through the formal competitive bidding process like every other contract does in this county?
We, we actually do a lot of piggyback contracting. It is a, a very efficient system where it is a competitive solicitation that another jurisdiction would do, where we are then able to kind of tag on to them and use their, their competitive process. So we, we do that.
How many, how many piggyback contracts do we currently have in Manatee County right now? And, and what dictates whether or not we do a piggyback contract?
Off the top of my head, I don't know the number. It's, it's tens of, of contracts that we do that with. The, I'm sorry, your second question was?
Well, I mean, this did not go through a competitive, my, my issue with this is I feel as if this did not go through a competitive bidding process and that people can just put whatever price they want on these particular lights. Now, we already know that this is going to cost us a significant amount of money, right, putting in these lights, right? And the maintenance of them. And not just that, the ongoing cost to this particular program. I want to make sure that we're doing things properly so that, you know, we're just not spending money, just to spend money, and, and we're getting the best deal possible that's out there. Was there an emergency procurement justification used to bypass this bidding process?
To be clear, we didn't bypass a, a bidding process. Piggybacking is used to try to have a, an efficient procurement process so that we aren't spending a lot of staff time developing a new procurement when another jurisdiction may have gone through that process already. But that being said, if it is a desire of the board to have our own competitive process for these lights, we are more than willing to do that.
So how did we essentially select this particular vendor, vendor? And how were they chosen? Through, why did we pick this vendor opposed to another one utilizing the piggyback process?
Evan, I can, I can chime in. So we use this Streetleaf at several of our parks. I believe Ron DeSantis was the first park we utilized them, then we started using them in Parish Park Phase 1, so they were already a preferred vendor that we started piggybacking on.
So no other vendors or community partners were given the opportunity to participate or submit proposals on this particular, on these particular lights? No? So what is the total cost, projected cost again, for Light Up Manatee program? And I'm not just talking about the purchase of the lighting. I'm talking about what are we expecting the ongoing costs to be, as well as what are we expecting the maintenance costs to be? How many employees is it going to take to maintain this particular product? You know, those are the types of things I'm looking for.
I do.
There's a slide that shows what the ongoing, anticipated ongoing lease cost is. Again, we're using primarily FPNL to, to install these lights, and these are leased lights, so FPL maintains all the lighting. The installation costs, we're looking at roughly $3 million, but we're aiming to come in under that for the 3,628 lights total. So if you can see, there's a, there's a monthly lease cost per, per unit of $12. That's the average right now. It does vary based upon, you know, the type of light, because not all locations get the same fixtures depending on. But on average, that's, that's, right now, that's what we're looking at is $12 a month per unit.
Okay, so $3 million for install price. That's not the price of the lights?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So is that $3 million, what is the, how much is it going to cost us solar compared to the other light?
Well, solar is, if you're looking at lease-to-lease, solar is, right now, you're looking at two options, the Avenue and the Boulevard fixture. One is, the Boulevard fixture is $55 a month, and the Avenue fixture is $50 a month versus the $1,202 for, for FPNL.
So that's the lease option?
That's the lease option.
Compared to the, the purchase option, which is what? What is the purchase option per light?
For solar?
Yes.
Yeah, you're looking roughly around a little over $5,000.
So $5,000 on the purchase price, $50 a month on the lease price, so that's a 20-year lease, so we're going to be, end up paying how much more compared to the purchase price?
More than double. If you, if you did the same number of fixtures side-by-side, you'd be paying more than double for the solar.
So does that lease price include maintenance?
For the solar? Yes, sir.
So who's maintaining it?
That would be Streetleaf.
Okay.
In this particular case, if we use the piggyback contract.
What is the specific brand of the light that we're using?
It's a Streetleaf brand. They own their own brand.
Okay.
As far as I know. I don't know a whole lot about where the fixture is made.
It sounds like to me that the leasing options are...
And to be clear, we, we chose to use the, the, the solar, solar is a very good option in certain cases where there's no tree canopy. It has its uses, and we did capitalize, we did identify a few communities where we thought solar would be a very good option. But we were very cautious in moving forward without more specific direction using it, you know, county-wide. It's not a good viable option for thoroughfares, but for communities, it has proven, you know, to be a, a good option in some cases. It's not a good viable option for thoroughfares, but for communities, it has proven, you know, to be a good option in some cases.
Okay.
Again, we do have challenges where we have a lot of these older established communities that have a lot of tree canopy. A lot of folks tend to plant trees in the property lines and in the right-of-way.
And so, it's really not lighting up anything because of the canopies that are in the area?
It creates a challenge because you could end up having to cut down a lot of trees or trim them back real considerably because you can't have anything over that solar panel. So, that was one of the challenges that we had in identifying, you know, some of these locations. But regardless, just based upon the, on cost, FPL has been a great partner. It was kind of a no-brainer for us to go that route. Again, you can look at it both ways, there's pluses and minuses. To be fair, Streetleaf, you know, and FPL for that matter, both weathered the storms pretty well. So, we do have those 21 installed, we were monitoring those during the storm.
Well, we have two contractors on this, right? We have FPL and we have Streetleaf.
Yeah, FPL has been our primary.
Okay, but we have two contractors on this job. Why do we have two contractors on this job and not one?
Well, it's just a matter of which type of light we're choosing, so.
Okay. So, what's, where are we funding, what source are we funding this from, Charlie?
The TIF, Southwest TIF.
It was the ARP funds.
Oh, excuse me, thank you.
It was ARP funds?
ARP, thank you. Generational impact funds.
And how much is in that bucket?
Well, we uncovered, $3 million was the estimated cost for this pilot program, $3 million.
Okay, and is this program included in the original FY budget? Or has it been later added via amendment?
It was outside of it, it was ARP funds.
Yeah, it was ARP, so.
Okay, so is it coming up for this new budget as well, how much we're going to allocate?
No, sir. This has been, the $3 million has been allocated and I believe the presentation...
So, that's all we're going to allocate to this project currently today is the purchase of these lights? We're not going to dictate how much it's going to cost for the operational cost in regards to this program? How much is allocated for that?
Right now, sir, the allocated cost is $3 million unless the scope is increased to go for other districts. But right now, we've allocated $3 million.
Okay. So, let's talk about reoccurring costs again associated with this program and the future budgets. What do you estimate this program costing us from a reoccurring standpoint year by year?
It's basically going to be around $50,000 a year for all the lights that we've added. Oh, I'm sorry, a month, sorry.
$50 a month?
Correct.
So, $600,000 a year? For all lights?
Correct, including the ones that were in the old MSBUs and everything.
Okay. Did we consult with the county attorney's office regarding the legality of bypassing procurement procedures on this particular project? I want to know because it doesn't seem like we did any...
The county attorney's on the board, so why didn't she answer the question?
Yeah, she probably wasn't here when that happened, though.
Thank you for the question, Commissioner. Just so you know, I was actually, I put myself on the board to try to answer this question about the piggybacking so you would understand. Piggybacking contracts, it's a slang term that's used, but it's contemplated by your procurement code and your administrative procedures pursuant to procurement. And they're called cooperative procurements and use of other government agency contracts. If you're going to use and piggyback off of another government agency contract, that does have to be a contract that was procured through a competitive bidding process. So, nothing that I'm hearing here today gives me any indication that anything was done improperly, that all of this was in conformance with Florida law and your code and your procurement requirements. I know no one's here from finance or procurement to speak directly to it, but I don't see anything here that's raising any red flags.
Okay. What are our goals and benchmarks regarding Light Up Manatee program? What's our overall goal here?
So, as was stated in the presentation, this was a cooperative effort with the sheriff's office for crash and crime production.
Reduction, that's the overall goal, but I just was up here and was just told that there's no guarantee that this program is going to reduce crime and reduce crashes.
That's correct.
So, that was our goal and our metric. That's the whole reason why we brought this program to fruition. But now, I'm being told that there is no guarantee that this is going to do what it says it's going to do. Okay. So, how will success, what is, how will success be defined? And who is going to be responsible for evaluating this program's performance?
If I could suggest that we come back at a later date with maybe our partners at the sheriff's office to help with some of the metrics related to crime and what they're seeing in these neighborhoods after the lights have gone in.
Okay. I just want to make sure we do things right around here. That's it. And looking at this situation, I don't know if we did do everything right as far as ensuring that we're getting the proper pricing, ensuring that we're getting a good quality product. How do we even know that this Chinese-made product ain't going to break in three months by the time we put them on? We don't know that, right? Is there a guarantee on the product? If we decide we're going to purchase it, who guarantees this product? Do we have a guarantee on the product? Because if we're going to make a hefty investment such as this, we need to make sure that we have things put in place to make sure that we're doing things right and we're analyzing everything that's coming across as far as what type of light are we buying? Because I haven't even said that, instead, I started digging deep in regards to figuring out what type of lights we're buying here. That's all I have, Mr. Chair, thank you.
All right, no one else on the board, open this up for public comment?
For the record, Glenn Gaffey, Giblinham. I'm a little confused here. So, the people that have the streetlights, they don't get a monthly bill, right? The county's picking that up, right? Okay, I'm going to assume that's a yes. So, New Pierce, a very marginalized area, doesn't have any streetlights. So, I mean, hopefully, we're going to get some, right? But here's my point. I've lived there 40 years. I've had a streetlight on my street for 20 years that I pay for every month. So, if you're going to arbitrarily go around different neighborhoods and give them free street lighting, why don't I just send you my bill? Can I do that? Can I do that? Can I send you my bill? Second thing is the shield. There's a shield around the corner. I've been waiting three months for FPL to even respond, so that's my concern. And, you know, I'm a pretty much net-zero house, so when FPNL buys my power back, it's for $0.02. They charge you a lot more, five times that, to sell it to you. So, my second question is, are we getting that night rate or that FPNL net metering rate of $0.02 for these streetlights? And if not, we should, right? Because they have excess power at night and magically, that's when the streetlights go on, right? So, you should get that lower rate for those streetlights. So, I don't know what they're charging you, but that's what you should do. But, if I'm paying for my streetlight, I'll make it easy for you. I'll just send you the bill, save you the time. Because it seems, again, that marginalized communities stay marginalized. You know, we have a saying in my community, every time we see a county truck come in, "Hey, are you here for the three S's?" "Oh, what's that?" "Streetlights, sewers, sidewalks." We have none. Haven't had one since, any since '32, since we started building there. So, that's my concern. If other neighborhoods are getting a freebie, I deserve the same freebie because I've been paying taxes for 40 years. And I've had a streetlight there for 20, so maybe we should just make it retroactive. I'll just add up my last 20 years, send you the bill and give me a credit. I don't know, it just, Jason, you bring up a valid point with the Chinese product. You do? But I will tell you, streetlights come a long way. LEDs, 50,000 hours. It's an aluminum post, really, there's not much maintenance to it. Any person, you know, on the streetlights, you're typically on a lot line. Anybody can order a streetlight and it's there next month, right? Pay my bill.
I see no one on the phone, no one else in the audience. I'll close public comment. There's nobody on the board, so we will close this. Thank you very much, appreciate it. And we will move to the final item of the day, which is item number 73. And that, I believe, is Commissioner Bearden, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to have a discussion in regards to our attorney insurance policy. I know this is a discussion, knowing that what's going on and, you know, things that are happening here could possibly happen here in the future. I think this is a discussion as a board that we need to have. And what do we want our new insurance policy that's coming up? What do we want it to cover? So, I'll defer to the county attorney so she can give us details on what we currently have and what it currently covers. Yeah.
Is there going to be an action on this? Because there's literally nothing on this agenda and I'm walking out the door in 3 minutes and 30 seconds because I got a 12:30 Zoom, I figured we'd be on lunch, so.
No action, just discussion.
Okay.
Forgive me, Commissioner Bearden, but the discussion you and I had pertain to public official liability insurance.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, counting for the board.
Well, I didn't understand from your agenda item that you expected me to make a presentation today, sir. I'm sorry, I thought this was a discussion among the board. I mean, I can tell you that we have public official liability insurance. It comes up for renewal every year. I don't have the details of the policy with me today because I didn't understand that that's what you meant by this item, forgive me.
Okay.
But, Mr. DiCarlo, I did ask him, because we weren't sure what you were interested in. I did ask him to be prepared to discuss insurance to the extent that the board has questions about what they want or if there's a product that you're wanting from an insurance perspective that you don't feel we have today or that's not meeting your needs. We'll be happy to look into that, but I would need a little bit more guidance from you in terms of what you were hoping to accomplish with today's discussion.
Okay. Well, I know several counties, obviously, every insurance policy is different regarding the attorney liability insurance for county commissioners and some of the staff within the county. And I think it was just maybe we need to have an open discussion in regards, maybe we need to workshop it, I don't know if we need to workshop it, but maybe we just need to have an open discussion in regards to what we want our insurance plan to cover to protect former members in the future as well as, you know, some of the staff. But I know every county has a different insurance policy, so maybe that's something we want to look at as far as what direction we want to go as a board regarding this. Because based on my understanding, Madam Attorney, we, our policy's up in September, correct?
Our policy is up for renewal, but you should understand and recall that we are self-insured.
I understand that.
So, we are covered based on the self-insurance policy to begin with. And the public official liability insurance only kicks in once we hit our self-insurance retention amount, which is essentially the form of a deductible. And that's, you know, the current policy is half a million dollars
Yep.
before that would kick in. Now, whether or not there, whether you're wanting dollar-one insurance for us not to go through the self-insurance route, but instead to have a policy that would kick in on dollar-one, whether there's a product out there that we can buy or procure, we can certainly look into if that's the will of the board.
Right.
But, there's, and just so you understand, there's a difference, I wouldn't use the term attorney liability insurance because I don't think that's what you're speaking about. I think what you're inquiring about is insurance to protect commissioners?
And staff.
Okay, well...
So, what would you call that, then? Madam Attorney? If you're not going to call it attorney liability insurance, what would you call it?
Is this almost like an E and O policy?
It'd be a public, it'd be public official liability insurance, which is the same as what we have today. But staff are largely covered by our sovereign immunity as long as they're acting in the scope of their employment, not violating our policies, haven't engaged in something that constitutes bad faith or, you know, outside of the scope of their duties.
Based on my research, yeah, based on my research, I've seen several different policies with several different tiers of what each policy covers. And that might just be a discussion with us moving forward in the future, what we want to have covered and what we don't want to have covered. Because based on my understanding, I don't even know what's covered currently today. I mean, I've said, go ahead.
Put it out for the June 3 meeting and actually have somebody bring something back?
Yeah, sure.
I think what you're looking for is...
Your mic's not on, sir.
If we get sued individually and you can't represent us for some reason and we have to pay for an attorney out of pocket, you know, we're not just going to be asking for reimbursement. We want to know ahead of time that we can get reimbursed. The other thing is that, you know, as far as the liability goes and stuff like that, I understand in good faith and, you know, as long as you're acting within the scope, you know. But again, there are times when, you know, things are questionable, certainly with the state laws that are out there right now. I mean, they are so vague and ambiguous that we may make, we may say something and they might try to remove us or they might try to say, you know, "You're liable for this." So, what we're looking for is to cover that type of liability so that, you know, we don't get stuck with the, you know, the bill. I mean, the thing is that, you know, there are some times when you're going to be arguing with other, say even with the state, where they may come in and say, you know, "Well, this is how we see it." But the thing is, you know, I've done a lot of research right now and there are so many things in SB 250 and now 180 that are vague and ambiguous and they don't even know if they're constitutional. So, I'm looking at that, you know, with federal judges and things like that right now. And, you know, we just want to make sure that what happens here, you know, sometimes, you know, we'll get advice. And again, the advice is good advice and it's sound advice, but, you know, you know, based on that advice, we're backing off and we're waiting and we don't know where things are going. So, you know, I mean, there will be some times when we might want to turn around and say, "You know what? This should be coming to a vote today." And, you know, we just want to make sure that there's a liability policy in place for that.
Well, if, may I, very quickly? If you wouldn't mind sharing with me the examples that you have, Commissioner Bearden, of the policies you've looked at that lay out in detail the kind of things you're, well, the research you've got. If you could share that with us, we can give that to our broker and we can ask them to look for products and we can bring back at a workshop or whatever the board prefers, you know, whether it's, I think workshop is probably the best thing. We can have a discussion with the board about what options are out there. Thank you, sir.
All right. Assuming no one's on the board, my computer's closed, but I'll just assume it. I will reopen up public comment for future agenda. No one's in the room, I see no one on the phone. I will close public comment for future agenda. Any final words? County attorney? County administrator? Mr. Ron? Mr. McKeon? Mr. Ballard? Mr. Bearden? Mr. Phelps?
We good.
All right, thank you, I appreciate that. All right, with that, we are adjourned.